Okay, all right. Thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today, November 13th. Could we have the roll call, please?
Roll call. Trustee Clark. Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
President.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Also in attendance is Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Council, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act in JSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin the meeting to go into executive session. Please read the resolution by title.
Resolution 2013-261, a resolution authorizing an executive session at the November 13th meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. The two matters to be discussed in executive session this evening, one is East Orange Water Commission, which is a litigation matter, and the other is CFO Services, which is a contract negotiation matter. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back here at 8 o'clock.
That was a good spot.
You're very good spot.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Could we please have the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
President.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Also in attendance, Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Council, Deputy Administrator, Adam Lerner, and myself, Chanel Smith, Acting Village Clerk.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Okay, a couple of announcements, just in case anybody has not heard. Village Hall offices have moved across the street. 276 South Orange Ave. is right across South Orange Ave. from Village Hall, and we will be there while Village Hall is being renovated. All phone numbers, contact information, everything like that is the same, so feel free to stop by. We are on the third floor of the PNC Building at 76 South Orange Ave. The next Electronics Recycling Day is at our Department of Public Works on December 14th. Bring down a proof of residency and no commercial vehicles as usual are permitted. Leaf pickup is happening now. I'm sure you've started to see some of our Public Works folks out on the streets cleaning up. If you'd like to see when your street is scheduled, you can go to the website at southorange.org/leafcollection, and you can see a map of the town and all the streets, and when your street is up. That will be going on through December 9th. If you live on a county road, you can call the county, 973-239-3366. The next announcement is last, about two weeks ago now, we welcomed Zipcar to South Orange. So this is very exciting. There is now, there are now two Zipcars in downtown South Orange outside of the Firehouse Lot. We really hope that this is a resource that residents will be able to use, not only to kind of encourage more sustainable means of transportation, but also as a way to help reduce your cost of living. We talked to one gentleman who came down and actually had told us that he was planning on buying a second car, and his family may not, now that they have car-sharing resources within the town. So we really hope that it is not just for sustainability and for thinking about alternative transportation, but also to help folks with their cost of living. So if you're interested in Zipcar or learning more about it, you can visit our website at southorange.org, or you can sign up for a membership at zipcar.com. It's about 60 bucks a year for a membership, and the rates for the cars start at around $12 an hour. And there is a Ford Focus and a Toyota Prius down there. And if you have any questions, you can also reach out to us. You may not know it from looking at me, but this is No Shave November here in South Orange. And we are doing that as a way to help raise awareness for some men's health issues, and especially the idea is that by growing out facial hair for the month of November, they can sort of help raise awareness for cancer patients who often lose their hair throughout the course of treatment. So we've got about a half dozen or dozen employees that are participating in that program, and it's kind of popularized and organized by the American Cancer Society. So folks look a little bit more grisly this month than other months, that would be why, and hopefully that will help spread a little bit awareness about that. And next, do we have our Village Center Alliance Director?
Yes.
Oh, great. Bob, if you'd like to come up and just introduce yourself, that would be great.
Come on up, come up here.
Now we can see.
Great. Well, thank you, Village President Torpey, for the introduction. My name is Bob Zuckerman, and I am the new Executive Director as of last Monday of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, and I'm very thrilled to be here and in this position. One of the things that I'm most looking forward to is working with all the trustees. I've already gotten to know some of you, including Trustee Steve Schnall and Trustee Cullen, and some others, and there's a couple of you that I haven't met yet, but I'm sure we'll have the opportunity to do that soon. Just a little bit about my background. I think Matt Glass had mentioned me at the last meeting, but I ran the Lower East Side Business Improvement District in New York City for close to four years, and had a great run over there, but really wanted to get more into things like business recruitment and retention, which I know is a very big issue here in South Orange, and something that I'm already getting my feet wet with. You know, the other thing I think that is very exciting for me is that some point in January or early February, depending on when things finish up, my husband Grant and I will be moving to South Orange, to a brand-new home on Mika Street. And I know that, first of all, new homes in South Orange are kind of rare, so that's exciting. But we're really looking forward, both of us, to being really a major part of this town and helping it in a lot of significant ways. The Village Center really has, I think, tremendous amount of potential. I know you've probably heard that before, but I see it. on behalf of the entire community designate the month of 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the Township of South Orange Village. Would you like the proclamation? And if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you. Village President Torpe, members of the Board of Trustees, and residents of the South Orange community. My name is Barbara Bolello and I've lived in South Orange since 2001. On behalf of the North Jersey affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we would like to thank you for this opportunity. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the only national organization creating hope in a comprehensive way through research, patient support, community outreach, and advocacy for a cure. I am here today because my father, Lenny Bolello, succumbed to pancreatic cancer in 2010 at seventy-six. I'm grateful that he was able to play a role in my children's lives even for a short time and I miss him every single day. So on behalf of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, we thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work that you do. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public auction, a portion of village-owned property. Mr. Rother, let's take it from here.
All right, we're going to open an auction for a property commonly known as the Old Stone House, located on Block 1007, Lot thirteen. If there are any bidders interested in this property, will they please step forward to the microphone?
I know you were disappointed you were practicing your auctioneer voice.
Yep. I've been doing all that sold American stuff, right? Seeing no interested bidders, we're closing the sale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. I don't know if we have a sign and sheet back there. Did we have one back there?
Yes, I did.
If perhaps someone could run down and grab it.
At the entrance.
Okay. Could you just say, I'm probably not going to notice. Could you say thirty seconds? Three minutes. While we're getting the sign and sheet, John, were you the first one on the sheet? Or you might as well just?
No, but...
Bolello, Bolello, Hall Ford.
Barbara.
Okay. Okay, first is Janine Bauer. Okay, the next is Butch Robinson. The next is Timothy Hoffman. Is everybody who signed up on here going to say that? Just so I don't have to read through all the... Nope, okay.
They're all going to speak. They just want to wait for me to speak first.
Joey Pulio, same, okay. Bob Zuckerman spoke. Dana Lowe.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Village Torpe, fellow Township members.
Just please make sure to state your name and address for the record and just be advised that everyone's got three minutes.
Sure, my name is Dana Lowe. I reside at seventy-two Raymond Avenue in this town since nineteen ninety-nine. I've owned the home with my... On the home. Good evening, everyone. I think my objection to the traffic signal, in whatever form it may be, has been recorded. It's been verbally communicated and in writing. As I stated before, that's right outside my bedroom window. So any negative effects it may have is going to directly impact me and everyone living in my home. So I just ask everyone to consider that again. I don't have any protest signs, but me and my family, we're the real human life protest and impact of any potential negative impacts of any installation, along with, I'm sure it's been noted, other objections to it. That said, I do respect everyone else's view, whether you're for it or against it. So one thing I would like to ask is, if possible, I'd like to receive a copy of the ordinance. And if there's been a modified plan versus the original plan sent this past spring, I'd like to have a copy of that so I can better understand me and everyone in my house what type of signal could or might be installed in front of where we live and so we can better understand what our next steps might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Moore? David Rubin? John Somero, would you like to yield to John Somero?
John Somero, one seventy-nine Scotland Road. I've lived in the house for the last nine and a half years. And a lot of the statements that we've made in the past, I'm just going to give you the facts. The facts are that Scotland Road in South Orange has a legal speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour. The road is the second busiest road in South Orange behind South Orange Avenue. The road is traveled by truck, bus, and connects from Route two eighty to Route seventy-eight and twenty-four. There's over twelve thousand vehicles per day that use Scotland Road. Most drivers don't drive twenty-five miles an hour. The road is fifty feet wide, bends at various different points, and the neighborhood isn't residential neighborhood. It is not a highway. Last year, we stated that we had thirty, or approximately thirty, children under the age of seven. Well, this year, there was a birth spurt. We have forty kids under the age of eight that live on the road and additional ones that live on the side streets that intersect. The intersection of Raymond Avenue and Scotland Road is a school crossing. It basically is regulated by a stop sign. The South Orange Middle School and Marshall Elementary School, Ohb Shalom Synagogue Daycare, Barrett Center, basketball courts, baseball fields, soccer fields, and the swimming pool all are used by this intersection and this crossing. Over the past nine years, while residents have been... There's been numerous accidents that occur which result in vehicles leaving the road, landing on sidewalks, going through bushes, striking and knocking down the light poles. All of them, except for three on the entire street, have been knocked down at least once in the last nine years. Road signs ripped up, front lawns torn up, damaged two homes, and on and on. Some of these accidents are reported to the South Orange Police, however, others are not because the typical accident is they left the road, they hit the tree, they hit the sign, and they're gone. And they leave us with the debris. The residents of the community have requested the village and the county to address these unsafe conditions. We once again want to stress that we have a large and growing number of small children that live on this street. It is not twenty-five years ago. It is a street that is full of children. So, the West Montrose Neighborhood Association Board respectfully requests that the Village of South Orange Board of Trustees pass ordinance number...
Thirty more seconds.
...two zero one three seventeen, authorizing the installation and operation of the traffic signal by Essex County at this intersection. The Board also respectfully requests that the Village of South Orange provide a plan to fund the components of the plan for Scotland Road, specifically the two "Your Speed Is" solar radar detector signs and the lighting improvements per Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ronnie Doyle?
I have two kids. We live on Meadowbrook Lane.
Just please make sure to state your name.
Oh, yeah, sure. Ronnie Doyle, one seven one Meadowbrook Place. We go all the time to Spark House, the Music Store, and to the stores across the street. And I can just bear witness to the fact that even with the stoplight at South Orange Avenue being just a few feet away from those blocks of stores, the cars will speed to that intersection even if there's a red light. So while there's a crosswalk there, I feel like most of the people don't stop as they're supposed to for people in the crosswalk. So I kind of feel like that street does need some traffic control and the traffic light. I'm in support of it for that reason.
Thank you. I apologize, I can't read the next name, but the address is four seventeen Vos Ave.
Daven Chukuski, four seventeen Vos Avenue. I want to speak about the traffic light. I want to speak also to Scotland Road in general. The South Orange Maplewood School District considers everyone west of Scotland Avenue walkers to Marshall School. My children have been considered walkers to Marshall School for a significant period of time. The only people who are not walkers west of there are people who are west of the train tracks. So Scotland Road, at any point along it, is considered a walking route for the growing number of children on Vos Avenue and on the western side of Scotland to get to Marshall School. They are expected to walk or be driven by their families. There's no bus up there. Something has to be done regarding the amount of high-speed traffic going down on Scotland Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Sherman? Amy Dawn?
Amy Dawn, five twenty-one Center Street. I'm speaking about a different issue. I am here this evening to make a statement to the Village President and Trustees on behalf of the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission. Ordinance number two zero one two oh nine, section five point I, provides that the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission shall have the responsibility to carry out such other advisory, educational, and informational functions as promote historic preservation in the municipality, including making recommendations to the governing body. Tonight, the South Orange Village President and Trustees are considering the approval of ordinance number two zero one three nineteen... Actually, I assume that's the first reading of the ordinance, not approval, which, if approved, would change the titles of Village President, Village Trustee, and Board Trustees to Mayor, Council Member, and Town Council. Circa eighteen sixty-nine, South Orange Township included both Maplewood and South Orange. By eighteen seventy-two, the founders and builders of what we now think of as South Orange established this village under what is called a special charter. The special charter is a unique form of government in New Jersey that differs from more traditional forms of government. Today, South Orange is one of only eleven municipalities in a total of five hundred and sixty-five in the state of New Jersey that is governed by special charter. Our special charter is based on the village form of government and is nonpartisan in nature. For over one hundred forty-three years, our village has followed its special charter as amended from time to time, identifying its governing body as a Board of Trustees with a Village President and Village Trustees. Changing those titles would be changing an important and unique part of village history and the intent of its founders and builders. The commissioners of the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission urge the Village President and Trustees to maintain their historic titles as named. There is little confusion as to who has governed South Orange for the last one hundred forty-three years and you and the positions as titled that you have been elected to hold are all an important part of that legacy. So I thank you for listening to my words on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I did want to also note personally, I guess at your last board meeting, you also discussed whether we are the Village of South Orange...
Thirty more seconds.
...or South Orange Village. And that's really just a matter of semantics. For example, we talk about the city of New York and New York City as the same place. So there's really no issue in terms of maintaining both of those references to the village. And you might consider the Village of South Orange as the formal title and South Orange Village as your informal designation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, anyone else who wishes to speak, you can just come on up to the microphone and just please make sure to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Janine Bauer, four sixteen Clark Street. The history going back even further than what John Somero testified to with respect to Scotland Road and the schoolchildren and what Darren testified to as well, excuse me, Daven, is that the school board closed Montrose School on Clark Street in nineteen seventy-five and that caused all the children within the area from Ridgewood to Scotland to go to Marshall School, whereas previously they had a school that they could walk to with all safe local streets. So they were forced to cross Scotland Road. And one of the ways that I got my start in public affairs in this town was to advocate for the designation of Montrose as a hazardous road. Montrose was a very hazardous road, but you know, I would say it's about a tenth of the problem that Scotland Road presents. Most of the children just had to walk along Montrose. And we are fortunate that the school board has provided a bus, which really just means stopping the bus that comes over from Jefferson in our neighborhood so that these children, we have to remember, are only about this high, K to second grade, can get up to Marshall. And we certainly don't want parents driving them up there. It's already a bad situation with people parked all over the place outside Marshall School and idling, waiting to pick them up and everything. And I have to assume that a lot of those are Maplewoodians because I don't see why parents from Montrose would be driving their kids and our kids have a bus. So what we're left with is a situation where we would like kids to be able to walk to school, walk to school safely, and that includes crossing Scotland Road. It's not just the kids on Scotland, it's the entire complex from Scotland to... Changing those titles would be changing an important and unique part of village history and the intent of its founders and builders. The commissioners of the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission urge the Village President and Trustees to maintain their historic titles as named. There is little confusion as to who has governed South Orange for the last 143 years, and you and the positions as titled that you have been elected to hold are all an important part of that legacy. So, I thank you for listening to my words on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I did want to also note personally, I guess at your last board meeting, you also discussed whether we are the Village of South Orange-
Thirty more seconds.
-or South Orange Village. And that's really just a matter of semantics. For example, we talk about the city of New York and New York City as the same place. So, there's really no issue in terms of maintaining both of those references to the village. And you might consider the Village of South Orange as the formal title and South Orange Village as your informal designation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, any, anyone else who wishes to speak, you can just come on up to the, to the microphone. And just please make sure to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street. The, the history going back even further than what John Samaro testified to with respect to Scotland Road and the schoolchildren and what Darren testified to as well, excuse me, Daven, is that the school board closed Montrose School on Clark Street in 1975. And that caused all the children within the area from Ridgewood to Scotland to go to Marshall School, whereas previously they had a, a school that they could walk to with all safe local streets. So, they were forced to cross Scotland Road. And one of the ways that I got my start in public affairs in this town was to advocate for the designation of Montrose as a hazardous road. Montrose was a very hazardous road, but, you know, I would say it's about a tenth of the problem that Scotland Road presents. Most of the children just had to walk along Montrose. And we are fortunate that the, the school board has provided a bus, which really just means stopping the bus that comes over from Jefferson in our neighborhood so that these children, we have to remember, are only about this high, K to second grade, can get up to Marshall. And we certainly don't want parents driving them up there. It's already a bad situation with people parked all over the place outside Marshall School and idling, waiting to pick them up and everything. And I have to assume that a lot of those are Maplewoodians because I don't see why parents from Montrose would be driving their kids, and our kids have a bus. So, what we're left with is a situation where we would like kids to be able to walk to school, walk to school safely, and that includes crossing Scotland Road. It's not just the kids on Scotland, it's the entire complex from Scotland to Ridgewood. And I think that a pedestrian activated traffic signal, which is what is being proposed, is an extremely appropriate and low-scale fix to the problem of people getting across the street, including to Temple and other designations on either side of Scotland. And I pass a pedestrian activated signal every day on the way to and from work on Grover's Mill, Clarksville Road, and West Windsor. It's down the road from a grammar school and a high school. It works out great. And I would encourage you to look around the state, look at videos, and go visit these and see how low-scale and appropriate they are as a resolution for this type of problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Lori Hinsman White, 440-page terrace. I'm not on the sign-in sheet. I'm here in support of the traffic light due to excessive speeding on Scotland Road. I've lived here since 2000. I'm also a local Realtor. I drive down Scotland Road between Montrose and South Orange Avenue at least 12 times a day. And I'm tired of being rear-end, you know, tailgated when I'm going over, over the speed limit, getting almost run off the road. I have two kids at Columbia, so I do drive there early in the morning as well as like 3:00 and 6:00. And I just feel that it's extremely dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Moore from 9 East Clark Place. As John mentioned earlier, this discussion about Scotland Road has been going on for many years. Back in February of this year, this Board approved a resolution, really finally coming to grip with some of the issues that we've talked about over the years. I'm just going to highlight a couple, and just to remind you. Whereas residents and other interested parties, including community groups, neighborhood associations, have identified speeding and pedestrian safety as an issue along Scotland Road, whereas the Board of Trustees does concur with the need to address the above concern. Whereas Essex County does concur with the need and has made it known their willingness to provide a traffic light. Whereas the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee does concur and with the need to address these concerns on Scotland Road. Whereas traffic pedestrian safety is a crucial priority of the Board of Trustees in the village, therefore is resolved by the Board of Trustees to adopt the following Scotland Road Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Plan. Now, this yielded a seven-page document that was well-done, well-thought-of, well-thought-out, and presented a lot of different resolutions to the problem. I think we all knew at the end of the day that the only thing that's going to stop traffic on Scotland Road is a light. You know, the question is what kind of light? And I think in item nine of the report, it says, "The Village will work with the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee and Essex County to find the right type of light device for our local needs." So, I think we've already gone through all this. We've identified, yeah, that this is a problem. We need to address it. And it seems like we can do certain things, but a traffic light is really what we need. And as we all know, the Marylawn property is going to be developed, and it's going to bring a lot more traffic onto that road. So, it's not going to get better in the future. And with the birth rate continuing to rise on Scotland Road, we'll have to put a bridge up for all the kids to cross. But I support, as a member of the Board of West Montrose Neighbor Association, support the approval of the light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Timothy Hoffman, and I'm here on behalf of the Student Government Association of Seton Hall University. I serve as the Finance Committee Chairman for our organization, and I'd like to extend regrets from our President, Joseph Donato, who was unable to attend tonight's meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank Village President Torpey for attending our Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday. Your presence was greatly appreciated, and your words are very meaningful to everybody who attended. This evening, I'm here to discuss our vital relationship with the Village of South Orange. The student government and the university would like to work to foster and develop our relationship going forward. To do so, the student government is looking to build a bridge with the community of South Orange so that we can link our students to the citizens of South Orange, as in many cases, our students are both students in Seton Hall and residents of South Orange. There is an essential bond between the university and South Orange, as both our students and staff contribute to taxes and businesses, and the village provides us with services and an inviting atmosphere for everybody to congregate in. It is in all of our interests to work together to both enhance Seton Hall and South Orange collectively. Currently, the student government leadership is working on forming a new standing committee to work closely with the Village of South Orange. We worked, we want to improve this collaboration through this new committee, and we are hoping that our members can work to with and potentially serve on many committees in South Orange. And we are looking for guidance on how to make this arrangement possible and are very receptive to any ideas that you have as well regarding this idea. Excuse me for a moment. I'm from Hackensack, New Jersey, and I was elected to the Board of Education this past April. And in high school, I served on our Board of Education as a student representative and also as a liaison to the Recreation Board. We are looking for potentially similar roles and interactions in South Orange on various committees and want to have a more engaging relationship between the students and the village. The student government looks to really foster the important bond that we share and want to help and support South Orange in any way that we can. We feel that together we can strengthen our relationship, which will provide mutual benefits for the university and its students, and the village and its residents as well. We look forward to working with you and building this relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Dan Scanfield, and I live at 355 Scotland Road. So, that's a couple houses down from Marylawn. And I have a three-year-old and a newborn, so I'm part of the baby boom, I guess. So, the, I can't speak to the walking to Marshall, but my son goes to the temple across the street. And just even crossing our street, and we're only a few houses down from the temple, is really tough. Like, there's a light by Marylawn, which is good for traffic going that way, but traffic coming from South Orange is kind of pretty much constant. So, we're definitely in favor of anything you can do to slow down the traffic there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Rubin. I reside at 341 Scotland Road. I've lived there since 1988. I can sympathize with the parents who have young students. My son, who's grown up and out of the house now, he went to Marshall School in the early 90s. And this was before traffic had increased and the road surface had been improved, where now traffic has higher volume and traffic can go at a higher rate. And I can vouch, even at that time, it was difficult to cross the street. I currently have a dog, and we frequently cross Scotland Road at the Raymond Avenue intersection. And I can vouch that that temporary signage that's been moved all over the intersection does not do anything to stop the traffic. I stand there clearly with an intent to cross, and nobody stops to yield for a pedestrian. So, I think for public health and safety reasons, recognizing the residents who live near the intersection, I think a traffic light, pedestrian activator or whatever, is appropriate, can manage the traffic, can slow it down, and allow people to cross the intersection. And also, cars coming up from Raymond who want to make a left turn onto Scotland going north, it's a very dangerous situation now with the traffic going by and trying to make the turn up the hill, especially during the wintertime when the road surface is slippery. It'll make it safer for drivers and pedestrians alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Butch Robinson. I live at 265 Scotland Road. I've been living there since 2005. I have a 10-year-old daughter. And like everyone here, we share, like everyone here, I share concern about cars speeding up and down Scotland Road. I'm just not in agreement that a standard or typical traffic light will actually solve that problem. Obviously, cars speed to the light that is at Marylawn, cars speed to the light that is at Scotland. My home is about 100, maybe 150 feet from that corner, and my concerns are also with the quality of life that a light there will bring to the neighborhood. Cars idling in front of my house, cars idling in front of my neighbor's homes, additional trash, additional noise, and just the, the appearance or the feeling of downtown in a residential area. Obviously, I want my daughter to be able to cross the street safely as well. So, my question is, or my real statement is, it seems to me that enforcement might be the solution here. Perhaps in addition to some kind of traffic control mechanism, but the idea that buses can speed up and down the street, DPW trucks can speed up and down the street with no worry about being ticketed, with no concern at all, is ridiculous. And why we can't seem to put phone calls in, visits, whatever, bring them here and talk to them, the idea that NJT, New Jersey Transit buses can speed up and down that street is insane. Additionally, the installation of a traffic light at that corner, everyone knows, cars will come through the traffic light at Marylawn, make a right turn, go down store, and speed down Vos. So, by acting as if putting a, acting as if putting a traffic light there is going to solve the speeding problem, it's not. You're just going to move it somewhere else, and Vos will become more dangerous. It's already pretty crazy now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
Good evening. I'm not on your list, I apologize. However, I've been bouncing around your town for, or your village for about the last year. My name is John Rosellini, 99 Bavor Ave, Summit, New Jersey. Reside in Morris County, Atlantic Health System. Here tonight, actually, looking at ordinance which was tabled last meeting 213, 2013-20. We went to the last Monday evening's planning and subcommittee meeting as well, committee meeting. We presented there. We've been to the Business Alliance. I can help your new executive director. We want to be a valuable piece of your community. We want to be a valuable part of the business community and join your village. Doing that so requires some change of your ordinance in your downtown village, your business district, and would require the business use on several of the side streets off South Orange Avenue. The ordinance that was brought forward from your planner on Monday evening to the planning committee had numbers of uses beyond just the medical use. I will tell you that, you know, we've been going through committee after committee for over 12 months now, looking to have this adopted and to be able to move into your community. We've showed where medical is no longer what it used to be. It's now really part of a retail fabric, and it's helping bring people to a village center, to a downtown location, whereas the internet is keeping them away. So, with that being said, I just ask you to seriously consider that tonight. If it's going to be tabled again, how it's going to be carried, how it works with the planner, if the medical piece can be broken out separately so it can move forward. I look at the timing of the year-end with ordinance adoptions and everything, and I just ask that you please consider, we're not going away. We're going to work with you. We want to work with you and be part of your village. However, we also ask that you take cognizance that we are trying to bring a ratable, a taxpayer, to your community and be part of your community and fabric of the community. We don't just come and leave. We are here for the long term. We are a great ratable. We are a great corporation that can really work with the community and help serve the community and provide a need. So, with that being said, I thank you for your time, Mr. President, Village President, whatever the official title is, and fellow trustees. Someday, they'll call you mayor, I don't know. But having been one, I thank you very much. And that's my two cents. And I just ask you to really think of us seriously and how this can move forward and consider us seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there's no more members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments and move on to our ordinance for second reading and public hearing.
Ordinance 2013-17 and ordinance to endorse, authorize the installation and operation of a traffic control signal by the County of Essex at the intersection of Scotland Road and Raymond Avenue and the Township of South Orange Village.
Thank you. So, the title is pretty self-explanatory. This is the ordinance that several folks were just speaking about. Because this is an ordinance on second reading, we're also required to do a public comment, a public hearing for the ordinance. So, if there's anybody who wishes to go on record during this particular public comment period just about this ordinance, you are free to do so. Okay. Seeing as there is no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing and move on to the board discussion. Before we begin, I just want to contextualize some of the discussion a little bit. This is a discussion about this particular plan. This is the second time we're sort of having the discussion in the interface with the public. The only reason why this ordinance is even up right now is that after we passed a resolution earlier this year asking the county to install the light and endorsing kind of a larger traffic safety plan, a traffic and pedestrian safety plan for Scotland Road, only very recently, the county came back and said that they actually required an ordinance from us to actually move the process forward. So, I will just, again, contextualize, not to say that that necessarily defines anything tonight or not, but that the, it was actually a prior board at the time did make the decision to move forward with that. And one, one other comment before I ask for any comments and questions from the board is that there's two issues here that are, that have been raised. And we broke this up when we discussed this last time as well. One is a pedestrian safety issue, which is that there seems to be, without question, a difficulty for people to cross Scotland, and especially at Raymond, but at some of the other intersections as well, and that it's very difficult to get across, and there are resources and houses on either side of the street. The second is that there is a speeding problem on Scotland Road and that there's unsafe driving that contributes to some dangerous conditions sometimes and a lesser quality of life when a truck comes up on the curb and hits a poster or anything like that. And obviously, the, you know, the danger of someone who's walking down sidewalk or the street at that point. So, there are two main, those are the two kind of issues that were wrapped up in this discussion. And I have kind of, I guess, my own personal comments and questions as well, but I just wanted to contextualize that part of the discussion and then ask if there's any trustees who have any questions or comments.
Village President, did the county also say about the other pedestrian walkways and improvements that you would actually show on some sides? Would that be part of their overall plan?
Some of them. For example, that they repainted some of the crosswalks. They did tell us, although it doesn't seem to be that this is required, they did say that we had to pass a resolution designating other intersections as crosswalks. For, one of the things that we asked was if they paint at every point that there is an intersection, that they paint a crosswalk with the idea being, and we released a kind of a larger plan about improving the traffic and pedestrian safety. And part of that was to try and make Scotland Road look more pedestrian-friendly and less like kind of a highway. And part of the idea there is that there are, there are a handful of intersections that don't have crosswalks at all. So, the theory was that if we, you know, it would actually almost double the number of crosswalks on the street, so that would provide more opportunity for people to cross the street, where they actually had the legal right of way, and also create a different aesthetic view to the street. So, the long answer to that is that they repainted the existing crosswalks the way that we asked them to with reflective material, but they did not paint any of the new crosswalks that we asked for. They did then ask us to pass a resolution to designate them, although from our understanding, we don't have to do that for them to be able to paint them as crosswalks. So, that's hopefully something that they're going to be able to do. There were some lighting issues that we discussed, especially for pedestrian safety at night, that they kind of passed off to PSC and G. The temporary signs were part of the plan. We also requested that they paint in the road and that they paint basically a, you know, yield sign in the road. The county did say that that is not a policy, and they do, they don't paint that in roads. So, they were not prepared to move forward with that. And one of the other issues, you know, kind of from our side, was that what we were planning on doing as far as the speeding is concerned, which was purchasing or using those signs that show you your speed as you're driving, and that we would permanently install some of them along Scotland Road, and that those would, excuse me, have a twofold benefit. One being that you could actually turn the devices off and measure the speeding, so you get a very, very quick understanding of what the kind of speeding is on the road, what times of day people might be speeding, and things like that. And then, obviously, the other is that they are used to help slow people down when they do show you the flashing speed when you're over the speed limit. And that was coupled with an increase of enforcement from our police department, working with the county sheriff's police department as well, and that we were going to do both of those things at the same time. But from the county perspective, it seems like most of the things that we had asked them to do- them to do, that they are prepared to do, they did, with the exception of the actual installation of a light, which they did say they had, they have budgeted money for something like that.
How much did they budget?
I'm not sure.
Do you have any idea? Whatever the cost of the light is.
In the, in the two hundreds, whatever they determine that, yeah.
You know, because the traffic light itself may or may not help, there are advantages and cons, but it definitely won't help unless we put in all these other pedestrian improvements. And maybe some of the painting of the other walkways, if the county won't do it, maybe we should just do it, including painting the yield sign in the middle of the street. And obviously, the enforcement issue is one that, anytime we can do it, we need to push it along, which I know we do.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just also like that, if you're saying the county, if we don't think we have to, to do it, they have the county do it, but they've asked us to put a resolution together, why don't we just put the resolution asking them to do the rest of the crosswalks? It doesn't, I don't see any reason not.
Is there any reason that we shouldn't do that?
Why wouldn't we? If that's, if that's what they're asking for, let's give it to them, and then they'll do it.
Okay, so what we'll do, and I'll give you the addresses from the plan, or the intersections, and we'll prepare a resolution designating those intersections as crosswalks. Just quickly, I'm just, I just pulled up the plans, there's just one or two other points too. Part of the idea of improving the aesthetic, and not for aesthetics, but to make people feel like it's a more of a residential road, was also to do better streetscaping, planting. They were going to be doing that this fall, but I don't think they have done it, I haven't seen any planting. We haven't, we haven't been notified, Mr. Lewis, right, of the county coming out here to do plantings along Scotland Road or anything like that. So that was, one of the things was to improve the vegetation and trees and lights and all that kind of stuff, just in, you know, along with the crosswalks, along with improving, there are some curb areas that are just totally broken down, and just make the street look a lot more residential, and that that would naturally slow people down a little bit. So we will follow up with them about that planting. I would imagine it's starting to get too cold to be able to actually do that at this point. The other was that we were going to try and figure out if we can, and the, there didn't seem to be law that allowed it, but also not law that prohibited it, of creating a safe corridor where we were allowed to increase the fines for people that were speeding within a certain section on Scotland Road. And that's something that we should follow up on as well.
Yeah, that could certainly be part of a safe routes to school project. I would also say that going forward, as far as enforcement goes, we should keep in mind Mr. Robinson's point, that we have to expect that there will be people who want to speed, and they will develop cut-throughs, and especially people who continually use the same road will become creatures of habits and use the same cut-throughs, so frankly, we could catch them that way. So I encourage you in the neighborhood to keep a surprise of those, and so we can find out as these changes are implemented, what are the resultant cut-through changes.
And one of the things that's important to reiterate, that is actually the last paragraph in the plan, not the last paragraph, but one of the paragraphs in the plan that is important to note, is that a traffic signal has no impact on speeding whatsoever. That is not a, you know, Department of Transportation in any state, anywhere in the country, that is not a use, that is for that purpose, right? Traffic lights do not necessarily slow cars down. And there are, there's plenty of, you know, kind of research you can do on your own online and look up different guidebooks from different departments of transportation, where they make it very, very, very clear, in circumstances just like this, where folks are concerned about speeding, and the reaction is to put in a light, that the light will not have, there is no justifiable expected impact on speeding from a traffic light. The idea of that, of a traffic light, is A, to allow pedestrians to cross, because there, depending on the actuation of the light, that it would be activated to some degree, that it might run on a cycle, but that someone also would push the pedestrian button, the cycle would run out, and then they'd get a walk signal, and they'd be allowed to cross the street. And the other is that when you have multiple traffic lights, although I'm not sure that we actually have found that we have enough on Scotland to do this, is you end up platooning cars into groups, so that there are groups of cars instead of a steady stream of cars, and that makes it easier for people to pull out of driveways, to pull off of side streets, and to also cross the street by grouping cars together by light. And I just want to make sure to make that, to kind of reiterate that point, that that, that, you know, installation of a traffic light would be for pedestrian crossing, not for speeding.
What would be the next steps, assuming that this ordinance does pass? Who will the county be working with? Who are they going to go over the designs with, all that kind of stuff?
Well, that's a good question, and we actually took the first step already, because we were under the impression that we had done everything that the county had asked us to do to move this process forward already earlier this year. So we had had a meeting with the Transportation Advisory Committee, village officials, our engineer, and a representative from the county, and talked about basically what the light would look like, you know, is it semi-actuated, so is, you know, is it running on a certain cycle, are cycles different at different times of day? You know, those were part of the questions that we specifically put in the plan, that we would try and resolve, and we haven't. And when we kind of got back with them to try and do that, they said, well, actually we need an ordinance.
Is that Frank Delacarria?
Yeah, that's Frank, yeah. And so, and so the next step would be to have that discussion again, and that would involve the county traffic engineer, our traffic engineer, residents from the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee, one, you know, the chair of the committee, which is Dan Peterson. And we also had John Smero representing the Neighborhood Association as well at that meeting, to discuss, you know, basically what the concerns of the community are, and basically for us, some of us is laypeople, some of us less as laypeople, but to put our concerns on the table about what we would want the light to accomplish and what we're concerned about, you know, for example, one of the concerns that I've expressed over and over again is that I'm very concerned about a green light on Raymond for cars that are coming down Raymond and see a green light, and that I actually drove it again after we had that last meeting, and there's enough space that, you know, if you have a green light, you've got, you know, maybe 15 or 20 seconds to get down there, and that I was very concerned that people would be, you know, hit the gas coming down the hill on Raymond at a green light, and basically fly over Scotland where there's actually a pretty big drop-off to the next section of Raymond between Scotland and Vos.
I travel that road every day, and I travel it coming up, and I come a different way home, but every day, and my experience of just trying to get across Scotland Road, you know, has been evidenced by most, the majority of comments there, and there is a blind side, that I almost have to get a little bit into the street just to have a clear view to see the cars coming up and down Scotland Road before I can even see an opening to cross over. So I experience that every day because I travel that route every day, you know, down Raymond past Marshall School.
Right, right. And so, you know, I do think that, so basically the idea is that those concerns that we have about, you know, what possible negative effects, you know, on the actual driving conditions there would be, that we put those out, and then we'd leave it up to the county engineers and their consulting firms to say, well, this concern means that we would engineer the light X-way, and that they would come back to us with the actual technical details of how that would be designed.
Do we know roughly the turnaround time on what something like this would take?
It's a good question for the county, depending on how fast they move, I mean, yeah. It sounded like maybe I'm, maybe I'm making this up, but that maybe they talked about, you know, making decisions now that by spring, summer, they'd be, you know, putting it in the ground.
They don't need an ordinance, they want us to do an ordinance.
They told us they 100% need an ordinance.
They don't really need it.
Right, but. Legally, they do not, and the reason they want an ordinance is to have the hearing that you have in connection with an ordinance. That's really the reason why, so that they want a record of public, you know, needs, concerns in connection with the request.
Just to add to that, you know, they don't, because it's a county road, and that's the reason why they don't need it, but they prefer, just to support your statement, they prefer it when anything like this happens on any county road or area, because they would prefer to have the buy-in of the municipality and community before they move forward, even though they don't have to, they don't need it.
They don't need anything. They don't need a resolution, they don't need an ordinance, but they want, as you say, the buy-in.
They need it as far as they're not willing to do it without it. But beyond that.
I have another question, and maybe John can just nod his head. Was the support from the West Montrose Board unanimous for the, for the stoplight? Okay.
And for the viewing public, that was a yes?
That was a yes. I move the ordinance.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Laubson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
The board passed ordinance 2013-17 on first, excuse me, on second reading.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, what we will do now is make sure to contact the county and let them know that they've got their ordinance, and we will have that follow-up meeting again about the next steps, and we'll probably reach out to Dan from SOTAC and John Smero as well for that meeting. So if there are any residents in the area who have kind of questions and concerns, if you can make sure to contact your Neighborhood Association representatives, and they can bring that feedback to us when we sit down with them, that would be a great way for us to make sure that we're taking everybody's feed, possible, you know, feedback into account moving forward. Okay, next are, we had a, some table ordinances that are on for first reading.
Ordinance 2013-19, an ordinance approving a draft revised and restated charter for the township of South Orange Village, and authorizing the submission of the same to New Jersey Legislature for enactment into law.
Thank you. This is starting to be a little bit like Groundhog Day at this point. We've discussed and had this on our meeting for first reading several times at this point. And for some of the, if anybody's tuning in kind of for the first time, these are recommendations that came out in 2011, and about updates to our charter after a charter review committee was put together, and the study was commissioned, and the recommendations were made. Some of the recommendations, in fact, all but one of the substantial recommendations were put to a public referendum. The three that were put to the public referendum did all pass, and so we find ourselves at the point where we are now ready to update our charter. There are two different kind of categories of updates that are proposed. One are more substantial updates, the three main ones are changing the, removing township from the name of the town, so it's South Orange Village or Village of South Orange. The other is changing the titles from village president to mayor, and trustee to, excuse me, to council member, and board of trustees to council. And the third is instituting stipends, and we need to make sure, I don't know if that was rewritten in this draft, to make sure that it does not apply to us, but stipends for the next, the next board of trustees. So all, all three of those recommendations were put to public question, all three of them passed with varying degrees of majority. And then there are a whole bunch of categories, or sorry, a whole bunch of changes that are more, housekeeping, typographical, logistical, areas where we had kind of made up our own procedures, where really, if it actually went to court, it would end up deferring to state statute. So correcting those places and putting in things like saying, you know, pursuant to general law, I think we changed some of the gender pronouns, and updated a whole bunch of things like that, that there was really no controversy or questions over. I think that sums it all up. So this is, again, something that we had intended to introduce our last board meeting, but the copy of the proposed changes that we had for the charter, there were some errors in there, we wanted to make sure that we were doing this totally clean, and there were no possible confusions or uncertainties about what the language changes would be. So with that being said, this is the ordinance on for first reading, so if there are any questions or comments from any of the trustees, or do people have a motion?
I just want to, I just wanted to make, I don't want to, it's not going to say a question, I would just like the village attorney to, once again, explain the process, because after we vote on it, what happens then? Because it should be clear that it's not, it's not a two-step process, it's more involved.
No, no, actually, actually, special charters are actually an act of the state legislature. And so the charter that we're currently acting under is a separate act of the New Jersey Legislature, passed by both the Assembly and the Senate, so that when we want to amend it, we are in effect by ordinance requesting the state legislature once again to enact these changes. And what we're submitting to them is an amended and restated charter, and we have, to a great extent, taken those sections that are now covered by the general law, deleting them and referencing the general law, making those pronoun changes that the village president referred to, changing the titles to the elected officials, changing the name of the village to South Orange Village, and creating the stipends, which do not affect, take effect until January 1, 2016. Now, what happens is, this is going to go to, we're going to have to get a sponsor. Probably the Essex delegation is going to be asked to sponsor this legislation. It will go to the Office of Legislative Services to be analyzed, they're going to nitpick the language that we're sending down there, they may have some suggestions for changes, which we'll come back to you for discussion. And then at some point, it'll be referred to a committee in both the Assembly and the Senate for review, and a sponsor will then move it on the floor of each of the houses, and it'll be enacted, hopefully, and that may take years.
You mean a sponsor like our Assembly person?
Assembly and a senator, you're going to need one of each.
What committee do you anticipate it would go to?
You know, it can actually go to any, any committee. Judiciary could get it, it could go to a number of committees.
Really, I would think once it came out of OLS, it'd be ready for a, okay.
But.
One other comment, Steve, also, you said that January 1, 2016?
Yes.
But that would only, that would impact some of the board members, three board members' terms end in 2017.
2017, okay, then let's, then we'll amend it.
So to January 1, 2018.
Eighteen, eighteen, okay.
I had that question too, because I went back to the minutes, and out of the charter review, it was that it doesn't apply to the existing board, it's a future board. But then I don't want to penalize the people who are getting elected, whoever that might be, in May or January of 2015, it's just, we're on a weird staggered cycle. So for that new board, I have no problem with four people coming in in 2015, the stipend taking effect, and for the remaining three members, I'm okay with us starting in 2017, and then we'll be on a normal schedule after 2017.
That's a great point, is there any way that we could break that up?
I, you could.
I don't think, I don't think it's that big of an issue, I think it'll take at least two years before this even gets done, and I don't think, I think penalizing new trustees is probably the wrong term, it's probably more that they're not involved in this process, so it really shouldn't matter.
Yeah, and it was meant for the next board.
But I, but I think that, and then, it does come back to us again, comes back to us again to vote whether we're going to send it.
No, no.
No, we're done.
If they make changes to it, we have to vote on it again as another ordinance?
If, if there are, if there are any dramatic changes, sure, if there's style changes, no, but if there's substantive changes, surely, yes.
Okay. And depending, and depending on what's going on, it could take a year, it could take two years.
Could take many years.
It could take longer than that.
It could take many years.
By the time they're done, we might have another charter review.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's exactly what we said at the charter review.
Exactly. So if you're going to adopt this, then someone should move to amend it to, you said, January 1, 2018, is that what you said?
No, I think you keep it, I think you, you keep it at January 1, 2016, if that's okay with the board, and then for the people who still have a term that expires at the end of January 2017, or, I'm sorry, not January, but May of 2017, then the second set of staggered terms compensation doesn't come into.
Okay.
Could it be worded that, that it kicks in for each position when the current term expires?
Yes, okay.
So that that's going to be two different times, one is going to be in 2015, one's going to be in 2017.
January 1, January 1, following the expiration of the term of anyone in office at the time the ordinance is adopted.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Is this a motion to amend?
To amend.
Okay, so there's a motion.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. So that's amended. Do we have a motion to move the ordinance?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Schnall.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford, could we have the roll, please?
We'll hold on table first.
He did not lift it from the table.
Yeah, the motion needs to be to pick it up.
Yeah, so, all right, so, thank you. So a motion to remove. Yeah, so, all right, so, thank you. So a motion to remove this from the table?
Move.
Moved by trustee Schnall.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, it's removed from the table. A motion?
The motion to amend was trustee Cullen.
And Rosner.
So do we have a motion to move the ordinance on first reading?
That was trustee Schnall.
Moved by trustee Schnall, seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Could we have the roll?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
No.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
We have five A's and one N.
Thank you.
The board pass ordinance 2013-19 on first reading.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to lift ordinance 2013-20?
No, no.
No, that's not ready to be removed from the table.
Yeah, so why don't, why don't we just chat about that for a moment first?
Okay.
I know there's a few people my Sorry?
Do you want me to read it for the record?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
2013-20, an ordinance to amend the Central Business District redevelopment plan.
Okay, so this is to allow certain permitted uses on secondary side, secondary side streets is redundant, I guess, but on secondary streets in the downtown.
There you go.
To include different uses than what are allowed there currently. I'm not sure. So what I would just say is, you know, I would love to move this as fast as possible. I know there was planning a zoning committee meeting about this. Maybe trustee Rosner, if you want to just recap for us real quick?
Don't wait, don't wait for the committee update later.
Well, I mean, we have, we have this action to vote on tonight.
We actually had a first meeting the other night. Unfortunately, the planner was unable to attend, so we've tentatively scheduled November 22nd, early in the morning, for, for another meeting. The, the majority of the board was okay with the idea of allowing the other uses, but we have not gone over all the other changes that were in the redevelopment plan that was in this ordinance, which does constitute a lot more than just the, than just those changes. And one thought was that if we don't want to go over all those changes, that we would just rescind, for lack of a better term, the amendment that was done a few years ago, which had changed, which had limited the uses. So, but we're going to meet again in the morning of the 22nd, which, assuming everyone can make it, we'll pick another date as soon as we can, and so we can iron this out. But we really do need to talk with the village planner about some of the issues, because there were some that were still up in the air.
Is there any, I mean
I would like to move to amend the, the ordinance so that we are very specific about separating out these, the side issues about having medical practices on side streets or other uses, and the larger context of the changes that were proposed about overlay be put off into another topic.
So, just so I can get a understanding, you want to separate that out so that we can move forward in making some decisions?
Correct.
Would you speak into the mic, please?
So just to get some clarity on what you are proposing, you, you want to separate that out so that we can move forward on making some decision?
Correct. That, that was the original intent, that we wanted, it was the planner who made a larger context out of it.
So from what, if you saw the memo that the administrator provided from the planner, what, it seemed that the majority of the board felt was they were okay with allowing medical. I disagree with that, but the majority felt that allowing those medical on the side streets was okay. What we got back from the village planner was updates consisting of, of several items to the entire Central Business District redevelopment plan. So it became a lot, much larger issue with the ordinance that was being introduced, adopting a new CBD redevelopment plan, which, you know, since 2002 has only been amended twice, so it's pretty significant. So if we want to separate this item and perhaps rescind the ordinance that was passed in 2007 or 2008, not allowing medical offices, so it moves a little bit faster, you can do that. But I mean, we can't approve an ordinance tonight. We have nothing in writing. But I, I understand the motion just to split those two out. Quite frankly, I think we can get through this with the planner quickly enough that at the next meeting, they'll all be done at the same time anyway.
You know, that was my point, that was making me forget. Once we get through on the 22nd, I think we can hammer it all out, at least to the point that we'll be, you know, we'll have
Yeah, but that's not been my experience. You know, my concern is
We have not had any discussion on this at a committee level yet. This should be, I think we can do it in one discussion, but we have not had a committee discussion on these other things that were brought to us. In fact, we didn't ever have any discussion at this, at any level, on these other changes.
So, so why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we plan on having that, at the very least, that piece of the ordinance available for voting on? And, and we'll check in with you before the next meeting, trustee Rosner, if the planning and zoning committees had a chance to discuss it. So one of two things will happen. Either we will have the ordinance with all the different pieces in, or we'll have just the ordinance with that piece broken out. Does that make sense to everybody?
When is our next meeting? I'm pulling up the calendar.
November 28.
28th, and Mark Glenn's planning and zoning?
28th?
Trying to do it
Is that Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Wait a second.
We're trying to do
Are you, are you bringing the turkey dinner?
Yeah. No, the, the meetings, the 25th, this would be on the Friday immediately preceding the next board meeting.
The 22nd at 7:45 a.m. is what we're shooting for, subject to trustee Cullen being able to change her schedule.
Okay, and then we can have something ready. But either way, we'll have something that deals with medical on the 25th, and by the 22nd, if we let you know, we're ready to do it as a package deal.
So either that will be a standalone ordinance, or that will be incorporated into a larger ordinance that will be ready by that point.
Yeah, that makes sense, because at least we can get something accomplished instead of
Yep. No, that's great. Okay, so this is on the table, so we can keep it on the table. Why don't we move on? We've got one more.
Yes.
Twenty-one.
This is the parking?
Ordinance 2013-21, an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 152-36, Schedule 4, with respect to parking on Cameron Road, Mercer Place, Milton Place, and St. Clair Street.
I'd like to open this up for discussion. At the last meeting, I asked that this be tabled, because I want the opportunity to sit down with the Tuxedo Park Neighborhood Association leadership. A few days after that meeting, we did sit down. They had received several surveys and comments from residents within the neighborhood. And so we do have the endorsement from the Tuxedo Park Neighborhood Association Board unanimously of those who attended. And this ordinance is consistent with the majority of submissions that they received from the people within the area. I think it's a good compromise. One of the discussions was eliminating parking on one side of the street altogether, which was on the far extreme, which the fire chief can kind of confirmed and said, you know, that's a good idea. My, my goal is to get these emergency vehicles through. But for the time being, because the problem hasn't exasperated itself ever since the, the expiration of the order, that right now, there's not a major problem. They just want to be precautionary and, and put something in place. So adopting, I went through the proposed ordinance that we tabled, and it was sufficient to the leadership of that neighborhood.
And that is two-hour parking?
Yes.
Right? And that's consistent with the parking standards or ordinance throughout that area?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. And so I'm going to move to remove this from the table.
Well, I have another question on it. One of the other things that we had discussed was to review all the signage along the streets, to make sure that we have proper signage.
Okay. Is that, is that something the administration can take care of?
We will absolutely do that, and certainly do it in conjunction with, if this ordinance is in fact introduced, and it looks like it's going to be adopted, we'll make sure, if we do not have already enough two-hour signs, and make sure that every street down there is adequately marked, both correctly in terms of what the restrictions are, and adequately in terms of the number and spacing of signs.
So, so before we move forward, just so everybody's clear, what we're basically talking about is two-hour parking from 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. Monday through Friday on Cameron Road, Mercer, Milton, and St. Clair. And it doesn't change the, the, I think it's one-hour parking on South Center Street.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything existing.
But basically, there are two streets that have no parking restrictions at all, and this is placing two-hour restrictions there. That's kind of the bottom line.
Two hours, Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., same as everywhere else.
What, one other question?
Well, everywhere else includes Saturday, but Yeah.
Do we know if, one of the questions that came up last time, I think was around enforcement, and because it's a two-hour process, do we know if we're going to have problems with manpower as far as the parking authority or police are concerned in trying to enforce this? Because they're going to have to do a lot more driving and a lot after those spots.
I, I don't foresee that really being a problem. I mean, if it is, you know, we can certainly try and figure something out. But my, my guess is that, you know, when the signs go up, there may have to be a little bit of enforcement. But most of the parking, most of the enforcement for residential parking comes in from complaints from residents. So there is, you know, the police that, you know, are driving the neighborhoods anyway, and the parking authority will certainly go and check things out every once in a while. You know, they're not going to be up there every two hours cycling through. Usually, just what happens is if a resident is in the area, and they say, this car has been out here for eight hours, they call the person, and then they come out and enforce. So if, that, that's usually what's done throughout the rest of town. And if for some reason that, that's some extra burden, you know, we can kind of reevaluate. But I, I don't think we foresee that being
I think after a person gets a ticket once or twice, and the word spreads
And, and rest assured, Tuxedo Park will call us. They will let us know.
Yeah. I don't think we'll have a problem getting the complaint from
We will have no problem. So
Eyes and ears. So trustee Cullen, you had a motion to, to remove this from the table?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I move the ordinance.
Okay. Moved by trustee Cullen. And seconded by trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson? Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Hey, I'm going to, should I read this on your behalf? On behalf of trustee Davis Ford?
I move
Ordinance 20
Twenty
Move that ordinance 2013
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
I don't even have that in front of me.
Be scheduled, I'm sorry, be scheduled for the second reading and final passage at the December 9th board meeting. The public hearing will be held at that time for the reference ordinance.
We need a second.
I still have the, one more second.
I'm sorry, you have one more?
The Act of the Village Protocol, all of us taking necessary actions to publish public works, press sharing.
Yes.
Okay, so that, are you moving?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Davis Ford moves that, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
December 9th.
December 9th.
Yeah.
Do the motion
No, we didn't motion all of that. That should, that, that motion should include
I was, that was, that what that motion was for?
It should be for 20, 2013, 20, and 20, I mean, 2013, 19, and 2013, 21.
Okay.
Yes.
What did we say?
We just did one.
We just did 21, sorry.
Okay.
Forgive me, I will have that prepared.
So you'd like to make that same motion, perhaps again, but for 2013, 21?
Right, right.
Okay, so moved by trustee, we can just do two.
Right.
So moved by trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
It to be set forth by the clerk.
December 9th.
Okay, just ask you two question, quick questions. One is, where do we stand on the other streets, like West End? We started a, an ordinance on it, and I think it's still hanging out there.
Wait, Western Drive?
Yeah, Western Drive.
Yes, that actually, we got it back from our village engineer, and it's now in village councils.
As long as, and what I wanted from village engineer was the, the actual dimensions on the street, along the curb, where the prohibition would be enforced. That's what I need, because I've got the boilerplate I have. If he tells me from point A to point B, that's what I need for the ordinance.
And trustee Rosner, I spoke to the resident in question yesterday to let him know where we were with it. So it should, it should be ready at the next meeting, correct?
And the second question is, you know, we, we're changing the, the special meetings. We usually do the regular special meetings, the second meeting in a month, and we just passed the, moved it to do it at the conference agenda meeting again, instead of it, you know, we're getting into a cycle where we're making these meetings.
I see.
So we should need, we need to get back onto the regular cycle.
No, that, that, that's right. Maybe after the holidays, just because of putting that one off to the next, you're right, but putting it off to the next one might be, end up creating a whole extra. But yeah, there's, at some point, we're going to have to delay, delay something another two weeks to get back on the right schedule.
Thank you.
Just two other comments on parking, because these were kind of all wrapped up in the same discussion. One is, for South Orange Ave, what we're going to do is also bring in ordinance to extend, we'll talk to the county and see if they have any opposition to us doing this, but is on the south side of South Orange Ave going eastbound, so the side where Seton Hall is. We currently allow Seton Hall to issue parking permits for students in that area. And during this whole entire parking crunch and all that kind of stuff, what we realized was that we could actually extend the parking there, as we did as a courtesy to Seton Hall, and you could fit another 10 or 15 or so cars on South Orange Ave without impeding traffic in any way, because there's already parking out there. So the idea would be that we would just extend that, you know, there's no reason not to allow parking there. You know, it would just make it, you know, a little bit easier for some students to get to campus. And the right lane of South Orange Ave is already blocked with parking anyway. So we asked, you know, we had our police chief, there's no kind of opposition from anyone to do it. We'll make sure to speak to the county, and we'll have an ordinance prepared for the next meeting. There's no time sensitivity to that really, but there's no reason not to do it.
No, that, that's, I, I don't think we have the authority to pass an ordinance on, on the county road. That's, that's their
A few weeks ago, they required us to pass an ordinance on County Road, so I guess it depends on
But ultimately, if they want an ordinance requesting it, we do an ordinance requesting it. But the, in the end, it's their, it's their road, and, and they decide whether
My understanding was
We've done ordinances before for South Orange Avenue. It's not, this will not be, this will not be a precedent-setting move.
Yeah, because, because the, the village allowed Seton Hall to issue those
I'll reach out to county council. I'll square it away with county council.
And just see which way they want it.
I'll deal with county council.
Okay. And then the other, which turned out to be a little bit of a can of worms, was Ward Place Parking.
Yeah.
And that there is some very ambiguous history as far as whether there's actually parking allowed or not there currently. And there may actually already be parking allowed there, but, and I don't know if we even need to get into the whole history of it, but the, the bottom line being that we'd like to ask the board to consider allowing parking on Ward, and perhaps with some adjustments, to go a couple less cars into the intersection, to make it a little easier for people to get out of the Seton Hall gate and areas like that, where, you know, it comes kind of right up to the intersection. But, you know, the road was paved for that. And then I know there was kind of a history, there's some ordinance passed, and folks, maybe a couple people came out and were opposed to it.
The ordinance wasn't passed.
Well, the ordinance was passed, but it was, it was then attempted to be rescinded.
Actually, at the end of 2010, there was an ordinance introduced, passed, and then at the first meeting in January, there was a resolution directing the clerk not to publish the ordinance, by which it failed to become effective.
There was some, I mean, there was, there was definitely more residents against us allowing parking there than, than, than were in favor. And although the, the street, as, as the village president points out, it was clearly part of the street, a good section of the street was paved with the intention of allowing parking on that street.
It's, it's, it's worth considering, I think, you know, we had cars out there for 45 days during the parking crunch, and didn't really, there was a little, it seemed like there may have been a little bit of garbage on the street from people's parked cars kind of leaving stuff. That's pretty easy to rectify with public works coming by and making sure people are cleaning up, or maybe even giving people tickets for littering, which I think is perfectly appropriate. And anyway, so we can consider that and decide whether to do it or not. But it seems like we should, especially considering kind of the weird history, you know, we should make sure to say yes or no very clearly. So anyway, so that'll come up on the next meeting as well. So the next is, we had a tabled resolution from two meetings ago.
Resolution 2013-246, resolution selecting option for new rescue squad facility, and authorizing a preparation of plans specifications consistent therewith.
So this is a resolution to basically move forward with rescue squad relocation. The village administrator and I got back the last round of cost estimates, as we reported two meetings ago, working with Jonathan Rose, the architects and the cost estimators. The initial budget came in way over where we were hoping it would be. The second round of cost estimating also came in pretty far over what I think we'd be comfortable asking the trustees to vote on. So we spent a little bit of time on the phone with Jonathan Rose today. They've been very helpful in trying They've been very helpful in trying to find ways to get some of the costs out. In fact, it sounded like today we actually made a little bit of progress. And so unfortunately, this is taking a lot longer than we wanted it to take, but I think we'll be prepared to be able to have something by the next meeting that is in the range of what we've discussed for our budget, whereas the last two proposals that have come to us, you know, we're just not comfortable even, even asking people to vote on. We're happy to discuss any of it if people have questions, certainly.
Where is the biggest cost coming from, from your discussions?
You know, that's the thing about it is when we sit down and go over the numbers and Mr. Lewis, feel free to correct me or elaborate on anything I say here, but there was, you know, there really aren't any one item that is like this is the biggest cost driver. There's a whole bunch of like medium scale items. And so really, the only thing that we could do, I mean, for example, you know, what we looked at was, you know, in the very beginning was trying to have a facade that, you know, to some degree matched the firehouse. Obviously not quite to that, you know, elegance and history. And that was extremely expensive, you know, for example, having curved archways was very expensive. So we said, okay, we'll take those out and you can make them, you know, square.
For the vehicles?
Yeah, yeah. Because the firehouse got this beautiful kind of curved archways and, you know, and doing that stonework is very expensive. Even doing the fake stonework is very expensive. Having doors with a whole lot of glass on it was very expensive. We reduced the height of the building and the garage bays by two feet in the last meeting. And we were expecting that would save us more than it did. And because that basically, you're not just reducing the size of the bays, but you're bringing the whole building down two feet, so you save on the construction costs all around. We took a staircase that was on the inside, so there's a primary staircase, an ADA accessible elevator or lift, and then there's secondary staircase for fire code reasons. And we took that secondary staircase and put that up basically on the outside of the building. So instead of having to have a kind of vertical corridor within the building with HVAC costs and lighting and electricity and all that kind of stuff, is you basically have a covered stairway on the outside that acts as a fire exit. That saved a little bit of money. You know, some of the architectural details we discussed, you know, we kind of asked them to tone those down, you know, the kind of, I don't know, siding around windows and things like that, you know, just how detail, how good quality materials do you want to get? And I don't know if there's anything else really major that we kind of axed from there. But really going through everything was just, you know, you start to look at everything and you've got thousand here and ten thousand here and fifty thousand here and ten thousand there, and then by the time you're at it, you're well over the budget.
Even like the doors, you said you changed that to the type of doors that people have in their homes, garage doors.
Yeah, so, yeah, right. We're changing, we're changing basically everything, you know, and so the point that we're at now is that we have a couple other options that we're looking into as far as getting some cost estimates on what the building could be. And, and at the end of the day, we're still working from an initial design that was kind of, the supposition was that it was a nice building. And one of the other options that we're starting to explore at this point is what if it wasn't a nice building and it was kind of a modular construction, something that didn't stick out as a sore thumb in that area. But, you know, this was one of the downsides that we discussed when we were selecting the locations was that if we select a location on Sloan Street, it's going to be right next to the firehouse and, you know, our standard of, you know, how to design the building so it matches the aesthetic of the downtown is going to be a little bit higher than if it had been on Second Street. So that's something that we kind of all agreed to move forward with, but hopefully, you know, we're still able to make some progress. Jonathan Rose has been very good, you know, working with us, trying to find ways to cut things out. And at the end of the day, and Mr. Lewis, you know, maybe you could elaborate on this a little bit, is, you know, the way that a lot of these estimates are made is they are conservative in that they are well above what people expect them to be, so you don't get halfway through the project and have cost overruns. But the expectation being that in some of the areas, you know, there could be easily be ten or fifteen percent, you know, taken into account as far as the cost of different pieces. So we obviously don't want to ask them to take those cushions out because you don't want to get to a point where you spend more, but at the end of the day, the project could end up costing less than, you know, what we budget for it.
But there is some attention paid to low-cost aesthetics, for lack of a better way to articulate it, in a sense, instead of doing the whole exterior in the brick face, you will do at least maybe one-third of the front of the building in brick face to have some sort of visual or aesthetic tie-in to the firehouse instead of the whole exterior. That's cost-saving.
That's exactly right. And I'm glad you said that because that was actually one of the other things that we did discuss was, you know, we got away from doing an entire brick building very early in the process, but we were talking about a brick facade to the front of the building. And then where we did end up at the last time, the last time we were trying to bring this down was doing, I think it was the bottom third, maybe?
Yes.
Of brick that actually kind of matched part of the way village hall was done and then, you know, leaving the rest up to lower cost materials. And, you know, and that in the beginning, you know, the idea of looking at, you know, elements that look historic but are made out of not historic materials. But, you know, we're kind of getting beyond that point where we need to get some better ideas of what these costs could be from different cost estimator sources and also if we were to, you know, change the way that we constructed the building and do something a little bit more modular and pre-cast, where you basically ship in components, put them into the site and attach them together, and that's the building. So unfortunately, there isn't one big thing that we can sort of just, you know, X it out. You know, like for example, the elevator, which there's some quest, there's a little bit of gray area on whether it needs to be there or not, because the members of the rescue squad, you know, they are exempted from the ADA regulations for the, for the members that are there. But if they're having public meetings or trainings for family and friends, you know, does that meeting room, even without the shelter component, you know, does that meeting room become a public space? And if so, then you do have to have it. So that's like fifty or fifty-five thousand dollars. But again, you know, so fifty thousand dollars, but, you know, we're several hundred thousand, you know, above where we need to be. So that doesn't bring us quite down. Mr. Lewis, I don't know if there's anything you want to.
No, I just want to, I guess for the benefit of the viewing public, the trustees, to assure everybody, it's been a very, very deliberative process. This is not Alex and I sitting there on a piece of paper. This is, there's a, a really qualified team of professionals. There's professional architects, professional site engineers, professional cost estimators who.
Are we not qualified professionals?
Something like it. And, and this is not an uncommon thing, is you kind of have a vision, you have a goal, you have a wish list of what you'd like to see, you give it to the architect. You know, architects like to design nice buildings, not utilitarian buildings. So they come back with a first blush, you get the cost estimator in and then you go. And I, and I think throughout the process, I think they are all sensitive to our needs to try and control the costs. And at the same time, so we are looking at it, you know, there's that core functionality that you have to have, and then there's the, well, that would be nice, but, and that's what we've been slowly kind of chopping away, or the nice, but that's still sensitive that we don't want a, you know, boxy-looking, metal warehouse-looking building. But I think we're, you know, there are other obviously aspects in terms of the overall square footage, some of which implicates the shelter, no shelter, the number of bays, you know, everything's sort of on the table, but it has been, and it's moving, you know, I think at a good pace, you know, with, with all deliberation, and I'm confident that we will, you know, be able to value engineer it and get to a point where, you know, we can make that recommendation.
Are we beyond the point of having to use temporary space because of the timing?
I think it's not even really the timing. I mean, the more we got into it, and it's, it's a little bit up in the air because obviously that is somewhat triggered by what is ultimately the schedule on Third and Valley. And, and at what point do they start their site work and at what point in that process do they get to the point where they have to demolish the squad? You know, we're probably coming up on it in anticipation of that. We do believe, and I can't really get into details because it's still under negotiation, but we are fairly confident that we've identified a site that will work, that, that we've met with the owner, is available for a month-to-month almost rental that can provide garage bays for ambulances, they can be heated, and as well as some sleeping quarters that are already there, wouldn't require any significant outlay on our part to fit out anything. So, so we're prepared and have that working along in, you know, so that if we get to that point and we have to do it, we'll be prepared to do it. I think the squad's been involved in those discussions, recognizing that we would, the intent would be to have as limited duration as possible. I think they're, they're willing, they're, they're on board, they're team players, they, you know, if that's what it takes to be there for a few months, then so be it. But, but everybody is, is moving forward with, you know, on all avenues to get it done, get this part lined up, but, but you can't rush it because you've got to do, you know, again, that, that due deliberation and diligence to make sure that we're getting it and getting the value we need and controlling the costs. And to the extent we can, we can get that process done and avoid an interim spot, that's great, but if not, we will have one ready.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I just want to make sure everybody has kind of all the information that they want or need about this. Okay. So we can leave that on the table and move on to our consent agenda.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash two sixty-two, resolution authorizing the refinancing of South Orange Moderate Income Housing Corp. and continuation of the term of the tax abatement. Resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-three, resolution authorizing the placement of a lien on private property for a special cleanup. A private property at fifty-five Second Street in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-four, resolution improving raffle license application twelve thirty-nine to the youth orchestra. Orchestrates of Essex County, resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-five, resolution adopting a reimbursement policy for certain trustee expenses as, as it relates to village business. Resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-six, resolution for the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Physical Grant Extension, January first, two thousand, two thousand fourteen to June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-seven, resolution awarding a contract to Hatch Mott McDonald for urban planning and design services for the River Greenway improvements along the east branch of the Raleigh River Phase Five. Miscellaneous improvements Duck Pond area in the amount of one hundred thirty thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. Resolution twenty thirteen two sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the placement of utility poles and lines in the public right-of-way on Fourth Street. President Torby?
Okay, thank you. I will, just one comment, the twenty thirteen dash two sixty-five has been updated. Not sure why the original version only included trustees, but that has been changed, the language has been changed to elected officials. So all throughout the resolution and the title, I'll just reread for the record, is a resolution adopting a reimbursement policy for certain, where is it? Resolution adopting a reimbursement policy for expenses of elected officials of the village as related to village business. There's still a typo in this title, but anyway, so it wasn't just, the intention was not for trustees, for obviously everybody.
And the language within the resolution was updated as well?
Yep.
Great.
I do have some comments to that as well. If in fact we have stipends, I would assume that this is not necessary. I would think that, at least in my mind, there's a conflict between the two in that I would assume that the stipends should be covering these incidental expenses that.
Well, we don't have to worry about that right now.
The only, the only problem with that, the only problem with that is if, it's never happened. And for the most part, no one's ever taken advantage of this. I think there's been, you know, a handful of times when people have put in for reimbursement in the last, you know, whatever, X number of years, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And, you know, but there are certain, if there is anything that comes above the stipend level, which I can't think of anything right now that's ever happened, you know, but I can think of certain educational courses which, you know, could have.
Then would be a purchase order, kind of.
That would be a purchase order, that's true. Okay.
And your points will make, I guess, you know, to add a little clarity for what I was trying to express was that we were informed by our council earlier that this process to the charter is going to take several years, a couple of years.
Just making.
So this is for something immediate. And then I guess your point being is that if and when the charter is amended, then we need to revisit this.
That's what, that's what the only point.
I will say that, you know, it's been, one of the, one of the issues has always been for reimbursement without a policy, which we've never had before, is that, and part of reluctance maybe of trustees is not to put in for reimbursements on legitimate expenses, which these are put forth, these are the same ones that the CBA was bound from the state, CBAC. And, you know, so if you, if you wanted to take an educational course and you didn't know if it was, if it fell under the guidelines, you know, under a planning course, or if you wanted to go to a, to a, some kind of a meeting and there was an expense involved, most of us have never put in for reimbursement. And, and it's always been some kind of hesitation because we've never had a policy. And I think this will, this will help clarify the policy, although I'm not sure anybody will still put in for reimbursement.
There isn't disagreement, in fact, that this is something that we've been pushing for. In fact, it is a recommendation from the CBAC from last year.
And for those who are listening or watching, we are so used to using acronyms, you know, we know what it means, but, you know, sometimes we should use periodically the full name of the committee or organization so people know.
Citizens Budget Advisory Committee is the CBAC. And by the way, this is something that we had asked the, the current CFO and prior administrator at least a dozen times for.
Right.
To give us the policy of something, that we'd have something to work with, you know, because it's sort of unfair to anyone who's on the board, who might be on the board in the future or who's been on the board in the past.
Well, one of the other items that we've discussed as a possible limitation was the controls because we are approving our own expenses.
Right.
Through the process. And I think we have enough controls built in the, we have a budget and the budget authorizes a certain level of funds. The other part is, is that we review the bills list. If there's any question about it on the bills list, that can be challenged as well.
And that's done publicly.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, sort of just for the record, not to get into a discussion now, is that I don't, I don't necessarily see this as mutually exclusive of the stipends.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, well, we can discuss, although perhaps not tonight, but.
And there's really no need for discussion until two years or three years from now when it comes back, you know, approved, and then we have an issue, then we can deal with it then. But right now, there's no need.
Are there any other comments or questions on any of the consent agenda items?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pull up two six two. Not pull it out, but go over it.
Uh-huh.
Did you have? Yeah, my question on that one was, what, what committee had that been discussed in prior to this and what was the recommendation of that committee?
The question was, what committee had that been discussed in?
And what was the recommendation of the committee?
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, I don't know, I don't think it was.
Was an existing, it was, they already previously had the tax abatement on the property. I think it was expiring, so we were approached to renew it, if you will, it's, you know, the equivalent of a pilot, you know, so I don't, I don't know that it went through.
No, I don't think it did.
I think it was more.
It's more of a renewal of an existing.
Renewal.
Short-term.
Those are all voluntary, as far as I know. Although I.
Steve, just make sure you got the next one.
Is that a statutory tax abatement or a voluntary one? In lieu payment? We have, we have any number of, and I can't speak directly to this one because I don't know the circumstances here, but, but we have two, two types. We have statutory abatements, which are for a term of years under, under the terms of a state statute, and then we have a number of nonprofits who are exempt from taxes who have agreed to pay payments in lieu of taxes, which are renewed periodically. And I'm sensing, although I don't know for certain, that it may be the latter here.
I, I'm likely not going to be able to vote on this one tonight. Very supportive of this housing corporation, but it wasn't clear to me through the resolution itself, the existing tax abatement, whether it was voluntary or statutory. You're also talking about HUD and affordable housing. There's a few things in this that I just need to understand a little bit better. Trustee Levison, did you get a chance wearing your finance hat to review the resolution?
That was a request that was made by the CEO of the Housing Corporation to continue on the abatement, and I made the request to, to Steve.
Okay.
It's a statutory abatement, you're saying?
I'm assuming it is. There were two requests, and the other one is a co-op request.
Sure. Mr. President, we pulled that one out for separate...
Hold on, Mr. Lewis?
Well, I mean, and, and they, they, there was an agreement, an abatement agreement in nineteen eighty-seven that was for the lesser of fifty years from when they got it, or the term of their uninsured mortgage, and they're refinancing the mortgage. So, that technically pays off the existing mortgage, which would then terminate the otherwise fifty-year abatement. And it's, it was in connection with the refinancing of the mortgage. You know, that's, that's the only sort of change, is technically because they're refinancing, paying off the one mortgage, I guess, taking advantage of lower rates, that terminates that original HUD mortgage that's referenced in the eighty-seven agreement and would terminate the abate. So, that, that's the request.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the resolution now, and, and that's correct. This is, this is a statutory case. This is the one on, on VOS...
Right.
...which we all know of, and, and that's exactly correct. The, the term of the abatement would expire because of the refinancing, and you're just extending it so that they can refinance, that's all.
So, what, what would be the different financial situation that we have with this property if we let it expire and we didn't renew the abatement?
Oh, oh my gosh, if you, if you let it expire, they, they couldn't afford to refinance the, the mortgage because they couldn't afford to let it go back on.
And that's tied to the abatement?
So, you're accommodating, you're accommodating their refinancing is what you're doing.
Okay.
And this is a statutory abatement because their operation is a nonprofit, recognizing the reason it's authorized by statute is for them to pay something less than what would be the otherwise applicable taxes, is because they're a nonprofit housing corporation. And were this to expire and they were to go to full freight taxes, I don't think they could afford it.
Right.
And, and that, which is why the agreement was given in the first place.
But on the other side of it is that if they didn't refinance, the, the abatement still wouldn't be there.
Yeah, they could just not refinance and keep it till, like, twenty thirty-seven.
Right.
But that kind of penalizes them because they can't take advantage of lower interest rates and refinance.
We have a flashlight back there, you can't hear someone.
Barry wasn't using the mic.
Okay, are there any other questions on, on this resolution or any of the others?
Okay, so I don't want to pull that out, then.
Okay.
It's on that, on the remaining agenda.
Great. Have a motion for the consent agenda?
A move.
Moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Do we have the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
The board has approved the consent agenda.
Thank you. So, I have two appointments to make this evening, which I am happy to do for the Historic Preservation Commission. The first is twenty thirteen dash VP fourteen. That's my appointment of Karen Marlowe as a Class A regular member to the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission, so that appointment has been made. Congratulations, Karen. The next is twenty thirteen dash VP fifteen, which is my reappointment of Carolyn Mohn as an alternate class, an alternate number two, Class C member to the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission, so congratulations, Carolyn. Do you have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded. Moved by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Can adjourn our special meeting of the Board of Trustees and reconvene in our conference Could we please have the roll for the conference agenda?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnau?
Here.
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Barry Lewis, Village Administrator. Stephen Rother, Village Council. Deputy Administrator, Adam Lerner, and myself, Chanel Smith. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash, four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at seventy-six South Orange Avenue and on the village's website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken.
Thank you. So, very quickly go through my report. One, the first is Zipcar. I made the announcement earlier for residents about Zipcar. I just wanted to, I guess, report again about that this had happened and that we're all pretty excited about it, I think. One of the things that we haven't talked a whole lot about, but that is that Zipcar is also, Mr. Rother, did we end up finding out if they had completed their contract with the Parking Authority?
I don't know. Did Clark get a response from, from Mr. Hartwick based on the email? Nope?
Not yet.
Okay, so I just don't want to say anything if the negotiation, if it still technically has not been signed. But, the village, the Parking Authority earns revenue for each of the spaces, which is nice. And we've also introduced Zipcar to the redevelopers, to Ed Ayusu at Gateway, and we'll also be introducing them to Jonathan Rose as well. If you're doing a redevelopment project, you get two lead points if you have a car-sharing service in your complex. So, that's a really great feature to be able to do as part of your redevelopment project. So, we're really excited about that, and they're out all over town, they were out down, downtown maybe yesterday or the day before, they're at the train station, they're all over the place encouraging people to sign up, so, you know, definitely worth, you know, putting out to kind of your networks that this is available and, and to, you know, send people over to the Zipcar website if they're interested. I think they're walking around downtown and giving out discounted membership cards. So, if you see somebody, definitely make sure to grab them. The other is, I just wanted to make sure to thank the teachers at Marshall School. I was over there this afternoon talking to second graders and made me feel old, yeah. But, yeah, yeah, exactly. Finally, hanging out with people my age. And, and it was really fun, you know, I went to Marshall School.
Recognized the behavior, huh?
Yeah, yeah, hey, they were actually way better behaved than I was.
Now or then?
What's that? Both. And it was really fun. You know, we talked about, it had all the second grade students there, it was probably, you know, maybe a hundred students, and, and, you know, talking about how government works and different branches of government and things like that. Tried not to be too cynical. But it was, it was, it was a lot of fun, and the teachers really had a good time, and I just wanted to kind of, you know, let you guys know that that happened today, and it was just a, a really, you know, the kids were paying attention the whole time and asking great questions, and some pretty funny ones, like, have I ever been arrested? Not yet. And, and, you know, they actually did a walking tour of South Orange, and they went to the fire station, they went to the police department, and, you know, kind of toured all around town. So, it was kind of, you know, and it's for them as they're learning, like, civics and government in classrooms, which I was actually really excited to learn, that they're still teaching government and civics in public schools. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, and I actually saw my second grade teacher there, who was in the same classroom, and that was, was a pretty good throwback for me. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm also, this Saturday, doing a workshop at, for the Citizens Campaign. And when people aren't familiar with them, they are a statewide organization that does a lot of legislative advocacy and citizen advocacy. The organization has been the impetus for most of the pay-to-play laws, sunshine laws in New Jersey, and a whole bunch of other things, you know, really, really amazing people there. And they are putting on a series of workshops and panels, basically, kind of post hurricane Sandy, talking about citizen journalism, citizen activism, government, communication. So, I'm doing three kind of different workshops on municipal emergency management best practices. So, I'll be talking about some of the things that we learned in South Orange throughout our experience with Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy, and it's a good opportunity, you know, it's always great to be able to go out to those kind of environments and talk about some of the great things that we've done here, and also, you know, kind of interface with municipal officials in other towns, maybe learn some best practices as well. I was also at Montclair State a couple days ago, and I had a conversation with one of the political science classes there, and, you know, it's not, these aren't the kind of things that I usually update you guys about every time I do, am I speaking a lot of college classes? But we talk a lot about some of the stuff that we're doing in South Orange, some of the challenges that we face in government in general, some of the opportunities, especially for young people, to get involved in elected office, and, you know, just how important that is to kind of learn in the process, and even though it can be very challenging at times, it is incredibly rewarding. And I do think it's important to at least kind of let you all know that I'm trying to do my best job in representing us in all these different environments and places, and I'll be facilitating, moderating a panel down at the league on transportation issues next week. So, if you guys don't have anything, I'll make sure to send all the information so you can come to that panel, because I'm sure you don't hear me speak enough. Two quick updates. One is the website. So, like, we kind of reported last time, the website is pretty much built out, and what we're doing now, and we've created basically the navigation structure from our old website to the new one of everything that we want to move over, and we're going to start to have IT moving a lot of that stuff over, basically copying and pasting some of the content. But one of the difficult parts of it was to take, you know, the incredible amount of information that we have poorly organized on our current site, and how do we make sure to structure that the right way on the new site so that it's all clean, well-organized, easy to understand? So, we did get past that hurdle, and now it's just basically moving the content over, which is a little bit tedious, but is very easy to do. And then we'll be, you know, ready to launch the site, you know, at that point. And then, Ms. Lerner, just wanted to see if you could just take a moment out and give a brief update on public stuff. I know you had some trainings with some of the department heads, if you want to just let people know how that went, what's going on there?
Yeah, yesterday, we did a training with the department heads, going over the different tasks. Public stuff will be kind of cycling everything through, so we followed up with the tasks, we had the department heads kind of sit going through the system. We're working on the admin side of things, and so it's more of the process flow and the structure that we're creating. Once we're done with that, then we'll start with the testing, and then we'll be able to release it very shortly. So, it's moving along quite well.
Okay, thank you. That's everything for me. Mr. Lewis?
Okay, one, and just to follow up...
Wait. Trustee Levison?
The Everbridge component as well.
Everbridge is, Everbridge is done. There was one...
Which is a reverse nine-one-one system.
Right. And that was basically waiting on completing the signup process with public stuff, which I believe we had, we had gotten one more round back from them that was better, and I don't know if we, there was maybe one more issue, and we're, if we're good there, we have to get more microphones.
For the current utilization of Everbridge, of what we're looking for just for emergency notification, it is up and running and working. Once we decide to expand, we will revisit what we have on public stuff to add more of the options that you can add to it. But for right now, it's, it's up and running.
But when do we plan on converting from C3 to Everbridge?
Well, we're going to start to use it, I, I would imagine, we've gotten some training on it, we've got all our records in there, ready to go. So, the next, excuse me, the next notification that we have to send out, I imagine, we'll be doing through Everbridge.
Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, from a backend perspective, at least, that's ready to go.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, and I, just a little follow-up, because I, I had made a note, and I'm glad Adam was able to explain, because he's taken the lead with the public stuff and do the training, but just sort of for the benefit of the viewing public who may not have been following this and then wondering just a little, in women's terms, public stuff is a new software that we're going to be implementing. It's a, a citizen sort of portal to get to the village, to request various services, to report conditions, to do other things, and among other things, sign up for our new reverse nine-one-one emergency notification, Everbridge. So, just to kind of put the, a little bit of background of what those terms mean, because we all know what they are and throw them around, but I want to make sure that, that the public is aware of what we're talking about. Update on Village Hall and the renovation. You'll recall, we've obviously moved out. You'll recall, a couple meetings ago, we awarded a contract to Tricon. There has been a lot of progress made, although you don't see it because it's all the preparatory work, all the paperwork and contracts and bonds have been, you know, submitted. Mr. Rother has reviewed them, got the paperwork all in compliance. The contractors made their permit applications to the state. There are certain notifications because it's asbestos that's underway. There, they've had electricians in there and plumbers and working because there's a temporary electric service that gets put in, the existing electric gets shut down so that when they tear apart the walls, they're not going to get electrocuted. Similarly, we drain all the existing plumbing, so, all those steps are being taken. So, just even though from outwards, it looks like it's just abandoned and nothing's going on, there has been a lot going on, and it is leading up to the point where, as soon as those steps are in place and the permits are done, then they will, you will get in there and see dumpsters, trailers, tons of people in there. It's a pretty compressed window. From when they start, they only have sixty days to get it all completed. So, in the not-too-distant future, you will see a whole muscle of activity and very visible signs of what's going on there. But just again, to the outward eye, looking at it, it looks like we just moved out and it's just sitting there. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that, that it, all those necessary preparatory steps have been underway, and, and it is moving along at a good pace. The second step on the next phase after the abatement would be going out to bid for the general renovation contract, and we elected, as, as you're all aware, to utilize a process that's authorized by statute to pre-qualify contractors, to make sure that we get capable, experienced contractors in historic renovation. At a meeting not long ago, we adopted and approved certain pre-qualification regulations. Those have been submitted to the state, those were approved by the state, those are now being advertised and published. We will then get requests for that pre-qualification package from contractors, they will file it. So, while the abatement's going on, all these other steps are going on, and somewhere, you know, in the next month or two, we will then have all that back, get the recommendation from the architect that, you know, I recommend that these, you know, however many firms there may be, be deemed pre-qualified. That'll be presented to the board, the board will have to act on that. You take a step to formally approve, this is the list of pre-qualified people. At the same time, all the actual specs and plans for the renovation work are, are being fine-tuned and finalized and heading towards the hundred percent phase, and that'll be ready then to go out to bid. So, all these pieces will just follow one on top of the other. One note, and some people probably did discover it, but on our meetings tonight, and then regrettably, on our meeting so far in SoPAC, we had some technical issues that prevented us. We do have it on the cable systems, but not on a live stream. We were fortunate, and we thank SoPAC for tonight, we were able to utilize their YouTube feed, so it is going out on a live stream on YouTube. There is a link on our website that would allow people to go there. We are IT people, and trustee Levison, who's, who's our, our volunteer IT person, have been working very closely with Cablevision and, and the vendors to, to work through that glitch so we can get back on our streaming program, but we will hopefully be able to continue to the extent we can, and until we can do that, we'll be able to utilize this YouTube feed. So, just want to let people know that if you were, you know, in the past looked and you were not able to stream, you are now, albeit through the YouTube portal at this point. We did, just as sort of a follow-up, we had our workshop meeting on the recodification. I think it was a good, productive session. I believe we got through the entirety of the spreadsheet, I believe. And so, we'll be working with Mr. Rother's office to kind of compile all the decisions that were made in that workshop meeting. Part of that involves the fees and the fee ordinance. I have now, I believe, and I'll double-check, but I'm pretty certain I now have the updated fee recommendations and in some instances corrections from all the various departments to incorporate into this new, as we decided at the meeting to go with a new fee section of the ordinance. So, all those fees are now in place, we'll get that into a, a format that'll go with the recodification. Budget, twofold for the twenty thirteen budget, thus far, so far, so good. We will, though, as always, have transfer resolution, probably look for the next transfer resolution at the next meeting, but, but in terms of expenditures, don't anticipate any emergency or necessary supplemental revenues are on pace, so, so far, looking pretty good. Twenty fourteen budget, I'm just about finalized on, on getting in a format that I utilize where I, department heads will get a three-year look back on all their sub-account lines to go and, and track their history, as well as their year-to-dates for twenty fourteen. I anticipate getting those to the department heads by the end of this week, and then I'll be sitting down with them. Just a heads up, we probably need to be looking, and I will probably utilize that doodle pole scheduling to solicit available dates for a budget workshop. Likely, we've got the league next week, followed by a meeting on Monday, and then Thanksgiving that following week, so that's a short week. So, I think we'll probably be looking at the first week or two in December, so look for that doodle invitation thing, and, you know, please participate as, as quickly as you can so we can hopefully full, you know, firm up a budget workshop. Those were the main items I had.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rother?
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. In terms of the Village Hall renovation, one of the things that the board... Okay. In terms of the Village Hall renovation, one of the things that the board requested was having somebody come in and do a presentation.
Yeah, I will follow up. And I think now that we kind of got this dust settled, I will touch base with Mitch Fritz. And I guess we can debate, and I can talk with the architect. Mitch is our construction manager from Shapiro. Let me check his availability either for the next meeting or the first meeting in December. We have now, and he actually sent me a bunch of stuff yesterday and today with a lot of the updated milestones scheduling. We're now plugging in all the figures that we now have for the abatement. So that'll include an updated budget. So I'll check his availability for, which I don't know what the preference is of the two meetings. I guess we can also check the agenda. But if he's available, we'll get him in here next meeting. If not, certainly the first meeting in December.
And Trustee Colom, that's a very good point, and I'd like to piggyback on that. And I'd like a regular schedule so that we have some real-time oversight so that we can avoid the mistakes of the past. And so I would request that we have, based on the Board of Trustees consensus, either a monthly update from a representative or bimonthly, whatever is reasonable. I don't want to make it an arduous process. But we're talking about a major project, the icon of the village, and we're talking about multimillion dollars. And so I think that we need to be very, very assertive and put together an agreed schedule. I'd like to, you know, have that decided now. I mean, you know, by everyone here, whether you would like to have a presentation from the appropriate representative on a monthly or every other month update.
Maybe quarterly to start?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, certainly, and I'll check his availability, and there was, within their contract, built in certain attendance at meetings. So there potentially could be a financial impact if it became something beyond that. But in various phases, there may or may not be as much to do. But I will check with, and I think probably Mr. Fritz is the best sort of regular reporter. He's sort of our construction manager. I'll check with him. I certainly think, you know, at a minimum every two months, maybe more frequently, certainly as different phases kind of heat up and there's more going on, maybe he comes more often. I've been working with him, and Mitch is very good in some of his reporting, and to put that in a format where, to a certain extent, you know, a lot of the preparatory things, and to a degree, it's still in there, involve contract negotiation and discussions, that obviously you did not want to make public because potential bidders are going to see it and kind of see what you're thinking. But to see whether there's a component of that that we could kind of carve out, and then certainly, obviously, once we're under contract, then that goes away. And then you can be much more, put all this stuff up. So I will work with him as well to get, you know, his sort of regular reporting in minutes and milestones. And there may be an initial phase where we can maybe set up, a lot of them are somewhat voluminous, but I can either set up a regular schedule to forward an email of things to the board, or use a Dropbox or some other scenario. And then I think once we get past the point where we've awarded the prime contract, we can even then kind of go public with these monthly reports that he does.
Okay.
I would like to suggest that maybe the possibility of more frequent updates coming to the Public Works Committee, Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. And so they can act as a filter for coming back to the rest of the board.
My only hesitation is that, I mean, that's not really what the committees are designed to do. You know, they're not really committees to get updates on projects. They're committees to discuss policy. So, you know, I think we all agree in our planning is to try and use the committees as policy incubators. You know, if we can bring the discussions right to the full board, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't have those same conversations with the committee just here, you know, especially if they're just updates. You know, if they're, you know, the once-per-month update from Mr. Lewis, and then more infrequent updates from someone from the construction team, you know, I kind of see the committee as an added layer on top of that.
Progress reports that you can give them.
Yeah, and what we can try and do is get some-
They're going to be written progress reports that are coming out on a regular basis. Mr. Fritz is going to be reporting on a regular basis. So, you know, those reports can be shared with you. And there's an awful lot of information that's going to come out that still is going to be confidential. And so it's going to be important that, you know, the big picture report you get in confidence, there obviously are going to be things you're going to want to report to the public at large, and that can be done in periodic reports. But I think the more frequent written reports are the things that you're going to be looking for. And if there are exceptions, then you're going to want to have him in to talk about those things.
I had a question about the deconstruction process. Is this on? About the deconstruction process of the Village Hall. Is there already somebody in place who will be doing that? And do you know, is there any salvage value to any of the materials that are in the building versus what they are planning on keeping to restore?
Now, we, I mean, when it was done, there may be salvage value, but the way the contract was structured, that whatever's in there, once we moved out and said, here, it's your building, if they have some ability, I don't know how much ability they would have. Essentially, it's theirs. If they could get some scrap value for it, I think it's, my sense from talking to them in the meeting we had is it's unlikely, A, because there's nothing in there that's of that high a value, and B, because what is in there that you might normally be able to kind of scrap, they have to decontaminate because of the asbestos and the process associated with that. It's not worth it. They just throw it all in the dumpster. Because if there was, you know, there isn't like a lot of big brass fixtures or something that have enough value to justify the decontamination of it.
Okay. Steve, Mr. Rother?
Yeah. Following up on two of the matters that Mr. Lewis just reported on, we are right now working with the project professionals to review the contract documents for the big contract that follows. While the prequalification is underway, we are already doing all of the work to review the contract documents so that, once the job's ready to go out and for bid, all those documents have been, you know, carefully combed through, and we're happy with them. Also, on the recodification, there are going to be two major pieces that require rewriting. And we're working on those now. Those are the taxi ordinance and the towing ordinance. And what we're going to be doing, and by the way, the towing ordinance is going to be impacted by Consumer Affairs regulations that are changing the whole scheme for regulating towers. So we're planning on coming back to you with, in essence, the critical terms out of those two ordinances so that we can get agreement with you on the terms before we get down to drafting the specific ordinance, that we can agree on fees and things like that. So we're going to list for you those matters in advance so that you can give us your thoughts, so that when we go back and draft the ordinance, we're going to come back with something that really meets your expectations. Finally, I think the public should simply know that we are continuing to work to bring alternate water sources to the village. That's something that we're actively working on so that we have options going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson?
Yeah, I think a couple of the topics were covered about the technologies being the website, Everbridge, and public stuff. One of the things that I, Barry, would you like to talk about the contract that we're looking at for the CFO?
Sure. This, as certainly the trustees are aware, and members of public may be aware, we had a two-year agreement with the village's former administrator CFO. He continued in service as the CFO. That contract is coming to an end at the end of this year. In anticipation of that, the Finance Committee and myself, we looked and really looked at a number of options. And we are, we believe on the cusp, and anticipated the next meeting, having a solution to that. And we'll have that presented to the board for approval at the next meeting.
Yeah, and basically, it is outsourcing of the CFO function.
Right. It essentially adds that functionality into what we already have as an existing outsourced contract. And there are a lot of benefits to it. It will be more explained, you know, when we have the board presentation.
Right. And the other item was that, one of the other critical paths that we had was our telephone system that needed to be shut down in Village Hall. And in fact, we've implemented voice-over IP at the new facility. And that's another piece of the technology that we're moving forward with.
Is there cost savings?
There will be significant cost savings.
Long-term on the voice-over IP, substantial.
Yes.
And recurring.
Okay. Trustee Davis Ford?
I now understand how Sisyphus must have felt. In my hand, I have a copy of the, a draft copy of the employee policy and procedure manual. I want to ask, Trustee Levinson and Trustee Colom, have you received a copy of it also?
Yes, absolutely. And I appreciate the village administrator finishing that. That was a huge undertaking.
And the redlining.
Pardon me?
And the redlining.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so the, I'd like to say to administrator that I see all the yellow highlighting in areas that you need our feedback from, and basically our council. And I appreciate the prompt response from our council, that he's going to be working with you, Barry, to expedite this. And then what I would request is that by our next legal and personnel meeting, which is, I think, near the end of November, that all of that will be done for final review and input from the legal and personnel committee. And then we'll agree on a timeline for, if there's any additional time needed to do anything else. And then we can get the final document to the board as a whole for any input that they may have, with the goal that this will be completed mid-December, so that this resource is in place to start off 2014 in a place that we can present this to our employees, along with the performance reviews and evaluations. That might be a good time to give it to them. Or Barry, as administrator, if you decide there's a better way to disseminate this, you'll let us know how you think it would be the most effective way, so that we can continue to move forward and building and supporting the great employees we have in the village staff. And I'm excited about some of the things that have been accomplished in that area to get, for us to continue to grow as a professional organization. The other thing that I want to talk about on the other critical thing that I think has been hanging out there for quite some time, and I don't know if Trustee Levinson wants to give a little mini update or if council wants to, and that's on the fee amendments to the fee ordinance?
Well, Steve was addressing it before.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional things on that?
No, it's, I think we're doing that as a part of the recodification.
Well, it's both fee as well as payable.
Payable.
Okay. All right. And then the final thing I want to talk about that I'm really quite pleased about, I think it's really important when you have an organization that you invest in their personal development and opportunities to enhance their skills. And the administrator has probably identified the deputy administrator, Adam, to act in the role of HR. And under that role, I had been discussing for quite some time, the desire that, starting with the directors or department heads, to have some training on public service or community service and things like that. And I think, Barry, if Adam could talk about-
Sure.
-the training that's going to be scheduled?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is schedule a training in December, probably the second week of December. We have some outstanding faculty members from Stevens University that are going to come out and speak with our directors, department heads, and maybe a few other frontline people about customer service. And so, starting with that, we're going to be looking at, to the new year, looking at other professional development opportunities for our staff. We've asked a few of them already, you know, how can we help you? You know, what will help in your position to become a better person or better employee? And we've gotten a great response. And so we're excited to look, you know, forward to the next year, but we're excited about this first one in December.
I want to thank our administrator for carving out that area that, you know, just didn't exist. It was really evacuated. There was really no person really responsible or handling, you know, HR issues or really a program for professional development. So I think that bodes well for us going forward. That's all for me.
Thank you. Trustee Colom, or sorry, Trustee Rother?
I gave my reporter ready, so.
Okay. Trustee Colom?
Actually, Mark, did you want to just briefly go over the conversation we had with the zoning board of adjustment? Is that, or do you want me to just forward that? Yeah, all right, good and light. Public Safety Committee, we didn't have a meeting this month. Our next one is going to be on November 26. Just a couple highlights as we continue to work with the Finance and IT Committee on some tech things that are going to be rolling out that are pretty exciting. I wanted to thank all the people who came out to our headquarters cleanup, which was a few weeks ago. We had about 80 volunteers. I was going to thank the Seton Hall students, but I guess they had to leave. And then we're anticipating an RFP for radio communications between now and our next Public Safety Committee meeting that we'll bring back to the board. And that pretty much covers it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Clark?
Yeah. Let's see. I'm reporting for Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, but there are overlap with a couple of the other committees that I liaise on to, or liaise to. I'm not really sure what the verb form of that is. So in no particular order. I guess the first thing is that the, because of the league municipality, the next Public Works and Infrastructure Standing Committee meeting is going to be canceled because it conflicts with the League of Municipalities event. Let's see. Police Department Building, Salrenda has developed an RFP, and we'll be forwarding that to the Board of Trustees. Bike Way, we also discussed the continuation of the Greenway, River Greenway Bike Way running along Third Street back to New Waterlands Park and the ways to do that. Let's see. In the Environmental Commission, we've had a couple of interesting things coming up. We began discussions of an adopt a park campaign, which is an idea of basically encouraging residents to be willing to pick up particular areas of a given park and help out the DPW with keeping them trash-free and pick up the recyclables, et cetera. It's something that's happening in Maplewood, and they're having some success with that. And it's a model we want to try to adopt and put to work. And not surprisingly, Tommy Machete is very interested in that. Another one is a program called So Walkable. And that is an idea that came from a new member of the Environmental Commission, Neil Chambers, who has identified a way to make temporary signage in an effort to increase walkability and people's awareness of walkability of South Orange as a transit village and try to make that a more common thing. We'll be putting up temporary signs that indicate the walking distance in minutes from key locations in South Orange to other key locations in South Orange. So for instance, from Seton Hall University to downtown South Orange, 13-minute walk. And these will have a QR code, so people can scan that QR code on the sign and get more information as far as the number of calories they might be burning doing that, or the carbon offset as opposed to driving. And that will also give us some feedback about people's interaction with them, how frequent people are interacting with those. So that if it gets a lot of attraction, we can maybe move on to more permanent signs and identify other areas in town. can maybe move on to more permanent signs and identify other areas in town, so make it easier for people to walk and know they can walk from one place to another. The same gentleman, Neil Chambers, is also, the beginning stages of trying to develop sort of a stormwater mitigation plan, but with an eye towards identifying key areas of town which could benefit from such a thing, but also to identify sort of plug-and-play modules that could be, could be put into places so that they're more or less developed as ideas and ready to go, so that when grants pop up, we could more easily take advantage of those and have more complete packages of developable grants to try to take advantage of them. Let's see, the River Greenway Committee. Since the last time we reported, Janine Bauer has led two more groups of Seton Hall University students on October 26th and November 11th, along the River Corridor section, weeding and doing some maintenance there. Pretty successful, able to get rid of a lot of the vines that were killing everything that was put in there. So thanks to Janine for running that, and thanks to Seton Hall University for providing lots of young, healthy people to do some otherwise hard work. And that is pretty much, pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Sean.
All right, so with the fund committee, we'll start off with the cultural arts update. We had another successful, the annual Giants of Jazz was on October 19th, and it was a great success, followed up by, we're going to be having the Jazz in the Loft Series, which is planned and scheduled for the 2013 to 14th year. La Cinema Tech, which had been at Baird, has been housed in Baird for a while now, is actually going to be moving, this is due to its success, it's actually moving to Sopac. Starting in January, this is a international film festival, or film showings with Talkback, and due to the wide number of people who've been attending, we're actually got to move it to Sopac, so that was a big success. And want to point out, we mentioned a few things with Seton Hall, they're, this is the first time, the gallery exhibition, which is called The Captivating Cosmos, is being curated by two Seton Hall students, and that opened on November 7th. It's a very interesting exhibition, and I urge you to go take a look at it. On the recreation side, again, this year, the department will assist with the holiday events that are being hosted downtown by the Village Alliance. This year, that's, this is Saturday, December 7th. It's another one of the cases, actually, I see the Alliance and the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Committee are working directly together on a number of things, and that's, I think, a very good sign of there is a number of cross, there's opportunities for crossover and collaboration, so I think that's a good sign they're working together. In terms of the infrastructure, there are a number of our, we have some issues in town, some good, some not so good. In particular, the tennis courts are, the ones by the pool, Cameron, are not in very good shape, and we've actually had a core drilling to take a look at them, and we're going to have a report back in a short amount of time, based on those samples, what, if anything we can do, what's it going to take to repair them, and how expensive that's going to be. The skate house, actually trustee Clark mentioned the River Greenway, and we've already put some money aside, but we had some discussions about what we want to do with the skate house. Essentially, the consensus was from the folks present that we would like to use that space and remain flexible during seasonal, for seasonal changes, you know, winter, indoor recreation, spring, maybe even have an artist in residence, and summer, use it for a concession, and outdoor fall, outdoor music space, et cetera, so that's a good opportunity. Then on, it's actually the school district, but we got a PEP grant, Physical Education Program, one and a half million dollars. The benefit then goes to the South Orange Recreation Center. So that's, it's a great opportunity, it primarily goes and is intended for children, with the stated goal and mission is to have all children be active at least 60 minutes a day, and again, we'll have funding to help support that. We also attended, there was a meeting also with the board to discuss at Columbia High School, the pool, the relationship there, is we are also looking at recreational facilities in town, and this is something that I'd like to hear more from residents, how they feel about that, and we would be considering a additional facility, and with the board looking at that, it's a fairly debated subject right now, and we'd like to, I'd like to hear the residents' thoughts on what might be of interest here in South Orange. And due to the Thanksgiving holiday, our next meeting is actually going to be on Tuesday, November 26th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple quick discussion items. Trustee Levinson, portable garbage bins.
I think that's up for an ordinance for the next.
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have an ordinance that we're going to propose for first reading, and it's a clarification of an existing ordinance, which is entitled The Use of Temporary Structures, which includes all sorts of miscellaneous tents and dumpsters and such things. And it appears that there is a point in that ordinance that's not terribly clear with regard to the placement of dumpsters on streets. And the intention of the trustees in adopting the ordinance was only to permit those kinds of containers to be placed on the street if there was no conceivable place to place it on the property, and it was only as a last resort that a dumpster would be placed on the street. And so this ordinance is going to clarify that, and is also going to make clear that there have to be certain safety features associated with the placement of those containers, namely compliance with state law with regard to reflectors and other lights, so that they don't become a hazard on the street in the dark.
Thank you.
And that's, that's the amendment to the ordinance that we're going to be bringing to you very shortly. It's drafted, I guess we're going to put it on for the, for the next regular meeting.
And we had one more discussion item. Trustee Cullen, reducing speed on Valley.
Yeah, not really a discussion, I reported on this from the Public Safety Committee, I believe, last month. This was a result of Maplewood changing their side of Valley Street down to 25 miles per hour, and we're in that situation where Scotland's 25 and their end of Valley's 25, so we had a few blocks where it like jumps up to 35. So Maplewood had asked us to pass a companion ordinance so that when the changes get made, that they go to the county together and check in with our.
Sorry to interrupt the county.
Your microphone button.
Sorry about that, I didn't want to be sneezing into the mic all night. And so unless there's any objection to that, Steve had drafted a similar one to Maplewood, and we're prepared to bring it forward at the next meeting.
Sure, sounds good.
Done.
Okay.
A new business?
Uh, sure.
Just wanted, I noticed that Seton Hall has an initiative in response to the horrible situation that's happened in the Philippines, and wanted to know if there was any. I said Seton Hall has an initiative, and they even created an online way to support the people who are suffering in the Philippines, and I would like to ask trustee Cullen as the liaison to Seton Hall, and I'm the alternate, if we could find a way to maybe partner to help in their initiative to support the devastation in the Philippines.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Okay, trustee Levinson.
Yeah, I just want to, continuation of our discussion before about the old stone house, and since we had no bidders, what is our next step?
Well, the next step is to, and I believe that this was the purpose, to put it up for sale, either to sell it, or if there are no takers, to seek permission from the shippo to demolish the building. And since there are no takers, that would be the next step, to apply to shippo for permission to take the building down.
And who's going to be taking that step? Is council or?
We can, we can do that, sure.
We'll work together, administration and.
And council work together to submit whatever forms, whatever is necessary.
Okay, is there anything else?
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Yes, we don't have to move from conference agenda.